All right, at this time, I'd like to go ahead and do the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the Payom Kawicham, the people of the West, as the traditional land caretakers of the land on which Oceanside is built and its surrounding traditional cultural landscapes. Today, the Payom Kawicham are known as Lisenyo and are made up of seven bands: La Jolla, Palapauma, Pechanga, Rincon, San Luis Rey, and Suboba. We are mindful of the indigenous peoples in this place, and we pay our respects to the Lisenyo, past, present, and emerging. We are grateful to have the opportunity to be part of this community in Lisenyo Territory and to honor their history, culture, and perseverance of spirit. We do have one item for this workshop, and that is item number one. And it is receive a comprehensive report on the state of the city's homeless service strategies and provide staff direction on recommendations to be incorporated into an updated homelessness action plan, which will be brought back to City Council for future consideration. Staff also recommends consideration of the following key initiatives, which are further described in this report. You second. Him first, you second. All right, so we're going to begin with presentation by Sal Roman.
Actually, yeah. Mayors and council members, I'm actually going to kick this off. I apologize.
I was trying to figure out who was first. Who's on first?
Thank you. Jonathan Brega, City Manager. I wanted to introduce this item, and then I'll quickly have Sal come back up to begin the formal presentation. But before you this evening, it's a pleasure to be here and make this presentation and hold this workshop regarding, which is a first step in developing an updated homeless strategic plan. As you're going to hear during the presentation, the City Council did approve a homelessness strategic plan back in 2019. We are here to begin the first steps in bringing a revised homelessness action plan back to council. And so I just kind of wanted to briefly go over the order of the agenda tonight. And as you'll hear as well, we've made significant strides in addressing the issue of homelessness here in Oceanside. And thanks to the leadership of the City Council, we've dedicated quite a bit of resources, and we do think that we've made a significant dent. But of course, there's still much more work to be done. So for the purposes of tonight's agenda, as you can see on this slide here, if you can go ahead and back up. Sal, please. For the purposes of tonight's, we're going to start by giving a review of the 2019 Oceanside Homeless Action Plan, discuss the current state of homelessness in our city, some of the challenges and impacts that we continue to face, talk about the encampment resolution program as a potential model. And of course, that is the large grant that we got from the state of California to address encampments along the 78th corridor. Talk about some pathways to solutions, including several recommendations, and the next steps in a timeline for creating a new strategic plan. Next slide, please. So what you will be receiving is a comprehensive report. As I mentioned, we see this as kind of the first step in a multi-step process, presenting this report to you, discussing some of the recommendations that we're bringing forward at this point. Of course, listening to council and the community with respect to other ideas or thoughts that they may have. And once we have that, we intend to bring back a final strategic plan later this year, based on the feedback that we received this evening, and then based on the additional feedback that we received from the community. Before I turn it over to Sal here, I did also want to make a special announcement. Thanks again to the leadership of the City Council. As you may recall, we did recently advertise and create a new position of homeless services manager. I am pleased to report that we have made a selection for this position, a lady by the name of Tamika Tates, highly qualified. I think we'll all get to know her well, and she's going to do a great job. While she isn't here in the audience tonight, I know that she is listening in. She is scheduled to start on Monday, February the 24th. And of course, as you all know, the goal of this position really is to take the lead in terms of managing all the city's homeless resources. And she will certainly play an important part in terms of implementing the plan that we are about to discuss this evening. So with that, I am going to turn it over to Sal Roman, our management analyst, who has been doing the bulk of the legwork of all of our homeless services to this point and doing a fantastic job. I'm going to turn it over to Sal for some slides, and then he in turn is going to turn it over to Leilani Hines, who's our Housing and Neighborhood Services Manager. So thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan. Good evening, City Council, Honorable Mayor. So as Jonathan mentioned, I will be reviewing the 2019 Homeless Action Plan, our current state of homelessness and challenges and impacts. So before we move forward, I think it's important to look back at our 2019 action plan as it set the foundation for the framework in how cities, in the city's approach to addressing homelessness. The 2019 Homeless Strategic Action Plan focused on enhancing and expanding city services, including outreach, diversion, prevention, supportive services, including transitional housing and family reunification. The development of these programs in partnership with our partners, including Interfaith Community Services, initiated this framework. And as we reflect on the effectiveness of these programs, it's important that we review some of the stats that we are going to be reviewing. So as I mentioned, the key investments that were highlighted in the Measure X, I mean, in the last strategic action plan through Measure X funding were the homeless outreach team, crime suppression team for encampment, the homeless diversion and prevention services, including our bridge transitional housing, supportive services, including our family reunification program. And for those of you that don't know what the family reunification program is, it's our resource that we utilize to reunify families that have experienced homelessness in Oceanside and wish to reunify back to their family. Before I move on to the next slide, I also want to make sure that I make note of the, our, some of our stats of our homeless numbers back in 2019. As I move forward to the slides, we'll be comparing them to our more current numbers. This graph on the slide illustrates the total unsheltered homelessness count for the county from 2016 to 2024. The percentage that you see on the graph highlights are the total percentage of unsheltered homelessness for the city of Oceanside. As you can see, that the count for the region has fluctuated overall with a recent increase from 2022 onward. I also want to make note that although there's been fluctuation in the region, I'm happy to report that although there has been an increase from 2022 onward, we've steadily stayed at about 6% of the total population. And that reflects on our effectiveness in providing the intervention and prevention services. Now looking at our more current numbers from our most recent point-in-time count, this isn't including the most recent count we did, which was last a couple of weeks ago. This is from the previous numbers that were released back in June. And as you can see, our numbers consistently have been steady throughout from 2016 through 2024. We still are reporting a decline, although we have increased, just like the county, over the last three years. We've been able to maintain a steady pace in addressing our unsheltered homelessness here in Oceanside. I also want to make note of our, one of the key highlights of the comparison that they provide when they produce the numbers for the point-in-time count in the report. We actually showed a decline in our total homeless population compared to 2023. And I believe we were the only jurisdiction in the surrounding area that showed a decline in total homeless population. So now I want to highlight some of the numbers that we were able to analyze by gathering all the data that we compiled from the homeless management information system. For those of you that don't know what that is, it is a database that all of our grant, all of our funded programs use to enter the client information. And it's our way to standardize and evaluate the efficacy of the programs. I want to highlight all the different demographics that are on this slide. I want to call out the growing, the fastest-growing subpopulation of our homeless here in Oceanside. As you can see, the fastest-growing and the biggest group is our 55 years and up with 32%. The other graph I want to highlight is the the gender, which is fairly split. And the reason why I wanted to highlight this slide is, or this specific graph is generally when we think of the stereotype of what I, someone who is experiencing homelessness, we often think that it's a male. But here, and it's kind of a unique thing for Oceanside, we do have a fairly split number of persons experiencing homelessness. Lastly, and I should have mentioned this in the beginning, the total number of people that we served in 2024 was 1,071. And that's from the records I've been able to analyze, our highest number. So these are the programs that I was able to pull the data from. These are the different services, short-term housing and support services that we offer to our residents here experiencing homelessness. And one of the things that I want to make sure that I also note is that all these programs that we have and all the programs that we offer have operated under the directive that these are Oceanside resources for Oceanside residents. All of them have that requirement or that priority. As you can see, we have a diverse group of different focuses in beds for those who are victims of domestic violence. We also have, in the next slide, the different permanent housing options that we have with the different target populations. We have a rate and a number of different vouchers for the different subpopulations with the focus of addressing our most vulnerable population, including seniors, families with children, and persons with permanent disabilities. The list that you see up here, I want to make sure that I go over each one because this is what in our department and for those who work in our capacity consider the golden ticket. These are the permanent housing vouchers that we use and leverage to address a lot of the homelessness for our most vulnerable. And I want to make sure I go through each one. So family unification, that is the voucher program that we leverage with our, in partnership with our Child Welfare Services program. So they get reunited with their family members through the court system, and then we get their referral. Opening Doors Vouchers is a general homeless program that focuses on chronic homelessness. And this is the program that our HOT team generally uses. Project One for All. This is the program that offers permanent supportive housing through a scattered site model. And it focuses on those who are act-level clients or those who are severely mentally ill and experiencing homelessness. Our mainstream vouchers, these are our vouchers dedicated to those who have a household member who has a permanent disability, whether it's physical or mental. Our emergency housing vouchers, those are our most recent allocation through the Housing Authority. These focus on prioritizing those who are chronic homeless and/or domestic violence. Dash, this one's a pretty easy one. This is for our veterans. Reembrier, our newest development and most successful, I think, is using project-based vouchers. And several different providers are working together and providing permanent supportive housing to different subgroups, whether it's those who are act-level or severely mentally ill, TAE, which are transition-aged youth, and those who meet the definition of chronic homeless or have been homeless for longer than a year. And then we have several other project-based vouchers that have special requirements that also focus on special populations. Lastly, as far as the different programs that I discussed when analyzing all the different components, I wanted to make sure that we also highlight the success and our achievements. And I think that this slide showcases all the work that the different providers that we've partnered with have been able to produce in 2024. More specifically, I also want to highlight that in 2024, we're able to house 105 residents experiencing homelessness. And the number across all the different sections that you see on this slide have dramatically improved. And that goes to the different resources that we've been able to enhance, expand, or add to the city's arsenal of producing an array of resources for the different subtype populations. So now I want to talk about the challenges of homelessness and some of the barriers to stability. I think that when we're talking about resources and services, I think it's important to talk about the challenges that also go with, and using that to address some of the gaps that we'll identify further along in the presentation. And I think that everybody that works in this field can attest to the highest barrier to housing is those who have mental health or physical disabilities, chronic conditions that put barriers to housing. So these are the ones that fall through the cracks. These are the ones that tend to not qualify for services and are what we consider our service-resistant. Lastly, I want to make sure that I note that these numbers, although are, across our different programs, these are also self-reporting. So they're not necessarily diagnosis, but self-reporting information. So next, Leilani will talk about the different impacts on homelessness in terms of the different resources that the city utilizes and the unintended consequences or the impacts of homelessness or the symptoms of homelessness that it has on the city of Oceanside.
Good evening, Ms. Hines.
Good evening. So I do want to acknowledge a couple of people that are here, especially as I go into the Public Resources Development Services Staff Code Enforcement Division, Chief Parsons from our Fire Department, Chief Alda Vinos from Police, and all of their teams that helped to put together much of the information that you saw in your report and much of the information I'm going to present to you now. And so while Sal talked about how challenging it can be to house the homeless, the complexities of that situation, by not addressing the needs of the homeless from their housing situation to those root causes, the city and community will continue to feel the impact on our public resources. Stable housing provides a safe and stable environment. And without it, it significantly impacts the public health of those that are homeless and the community as a whole. So greater resources are used for emergency medical services, calls for service of law enforcement, public health issues like our hepatitis outbreak in 2017 and then more recently in 2023. Unsanctioned encampments also contribute to unsanitary health living conditions, placing residents of those encampments with their health at risk and degrade the environment. So if we do nothing related to homelessness, this will continue to be a problem for the city overall and continue to affect those that are unsheltered or homeless. So to give you a little flavor of some of the impacts that we're facing as a community, for Oceanside Fire Department, they are called out for medical emergencies for the homeless because they just are plain experiencing higher health risks. For fires at encampments, when our folks are just trying to keep warm, like on rainy, wet days like today, or safety concerns that might stem from just living in a place like the riverbed that no one's intended to live in and shouldn't be living in. So 15% of their service calls in 2024 were related to homelessness or where that involved the use of the word homeless or transient. 543 fire-related incidents involving our encampments. And this is a strain on our resources. So whether it's fire, OPE, or code enforcement, it diverts attention from other critical emergencies to serving these types of emergencies that may not necessarily be the case if people were housed. So for the Oceanside Police Department, in 2024, they received a total calls for service of 100,324. Of those where the word homeless or transient may have been mentioned in those calls for service, it represents about 11% of those calls. That's an 8% decrease from 2022 to 2024. But really, in the last five years, it's hovered around the 11% mark. This one's an interesting one. Currently, our code enforcement staff has two full-time code enforcement officers, 12 full-time contract staff that work five days per week removing trash and debris from public areas and encampments at about a cost today of $883,000. I put the elephant on the chart to show that in 2024, these teams collected over 1,600 tons of trash. An elephant weighs about five tons, five to six tons. That's 322 elephants collected this year in 2024 of trash collected by our code enforcement officers. And you can see in the graph that it's increased since 2021 because in the various years, we've increased the number of cleanup teams available to us. But that's a large amount of trash and debris within our community. So when we look at housing-focused solutions that are tied with support services, the city will definitely see reduced public health risks from unsanctioned encampments. We'll see improved public health for those that are homeless. We'll see a cost savings from our emergency or law enforcement. And then hopefully, a reduction in environmental degradation of some of our heat-sensitive areas. So to help Oceanside down this path of trying to address the needs of the homeless, the public health concerns, and the impact, the city of Oceanside, along with the city of Carlsbad, was successful in April 2024 in obtaining $11.4 million in state funding in the Encampment Resolution Fund. We got a lot of good press for that. Our agreement with the state was signed just in October 2024. Our term for this grant began in June 2024 and ends in June 2027. The ERF program takes a two-pronged approach of providing services and supports to people experiencing homelessness in encampments that hopefully really lead them down to meaningful paths of long-term, stable housing. And when we house them, we will have the goal of restoring the public spaces that they might have inhabited and then overall enhancing the community's well-being. So what is the Encampment Resolution Program? It's really a coordinated, multi-system strategy that relies a lot on partnerships, addressing those direct impacts of the sheltered, unsheltered homeless, and really focuses on permanent housing solutions in a housing-first model and really only looking to temporary, short-term as the last resort. It is not a system of suites or simply moving people along. Oftentimes, we go into encampments. They're offered temporary shelter that may not be appropriate, that might be declined. And then folks come back and come back and again, habitat, live in those areas. So the solutions in the Encampment Resolution Program are really aimed at permanent housing and addressing those upstream root causes to prevent homelessness from occurring. So this just gives you the area in which the ERF grant was created for. The priority encampment area encompasses the SR 78 Caltrans state right-of-way, including regions within both the cities of Oceanside and Carlsbad. For reference, we've got two stars on the map that are more priority areas for Oceanside. One being, on the left is the Walmart Shopping Center. And then the right is the Hobby Lobby retail area. This is a large swath of land with very different uses. So we'll take a very systematic approach to this area in dividing it into zones. And again, structured and a systematic framework that we will utilize. This ERF model really is based on a national model and a model that shows the most promising practice of really trying to abate encampments and house people permanently. It's something that's been used successfully in Houston where they've reduced their homeless population. So there'll be, when we talk about systematic approach, the way we will go about it is we have teams, an outreach navigation team, a housing team, a closure and maintenance team. The outreach navigation team will move into an area first. They will do the initial assessment of who's within that area, understand better their needs, and try to address those immediate and short-term needs all the while, still planning for permanent housing solutions. And that's where the housing team will come in. The housing team will be working with all the folks within that area that have been identified in that area as long-term residents in terms of finding a solution that's more permanent than living in the area that they're currently residing in. And then as we are able to house folks from each of those zones, we will move into what we call closure and maintenance. And that will be a team of our outreach teams, our HOT team, code enforcement, public works, where we'll do a cleanup of that area, put in the measures that deter the area from being inhabited again, and then move on to the next zone. The idea still is that we will do oversight of those areas and constant oversight of those areas to ensure that the area that we just went into, cleaned up, housed folks, doesn't become an area that folks will come back and return to. So that gave you a flavor of what we've been seeing in our homeless population in the last few years. The strategy of the ERF. the strategy of the ERF model that's a new model for us and that we are going to be engaging in here in the near future. We've already started planning that process. And so what we're here tonight to do is the first step in really trying to look at a systematic, structured approach to addressing homelessness. So that the money that we're using, whether it's $11.4 million or any future funding, that it's really intentional and that it's impactful, that we're cleaning up our community and we're housing folks. Part of the effort tonight in inviting the community and being here in front of you at council is to receive that crucial feedback from the community about what they see are the needs out there, what they see as potential solutions, and to start to listen in and then along the way, develop this strategic homeless action plan. So we're giving you a little bit of something to chew on. We've divided or think our focus is in four areas. Outreach and support services, that we want to strengthen the outreach models that we've already employed, that we're looking to employ with the ERF funds, but look at comprehensive engagement while still integrating a multidisciplinary service team. Because the issues that our homeless are facing are challenging, and they're a wide breadth from income, health issues, disabilities, or other mental health challenges. But we look at and expand short-term solutions, but that short-term solutions really are not where we want to be. They need to lend themselves to permanent housing solutions. So we want to increase the availability of shorter-term and diverse housing resources that will be tailored to meet whatever the needs are, if they're disabled, if they're seniors, if their families with children. But at the same time, we don't want to lose sight of what our community really needs, whether it's the homeless, those who are that one paycheck away from becoming homeless, those that are sleeping in their cars, that they actually have a place at the end of the day to land that is permanent and that they don't have to worry about the next month, the next year, or the next day. And then to address the greater community issues, really focusing on public health and safety for all, whether that's the homeless or whether that's our different neighborhoods. And so having a public health-focused interventions whilst at the same time trying to reduce the environmental and safety risk associated with homelessness and for our communities and for those that are homeless themselves. And then recognizing that we can do all of this work, but at the end of the day, we need to be able to have this program be sustainable, not just till December 2025, but five years from now and down the road. Because unfortunately, this is still California. Homelessness might be with us for a while, and we want to make sure that we have a response system that can address it for the long term and not just for this year or for tonight. So first, we'll begin with outreach and support services. Some of the strategic plan options that we've talked about and that staff would recommend is really standardizing the ERF, multi-pronged, multidisciplinary outreach framework and using it in the area, but then scaling it out so that we can utilize it citywide, whether that's in the downtown area or other parts of the community. The by-name list approach is an approach, a best-practice approach that we are utilizing for the ERF and that most other jurisdictions are utilizing. And what I mean by a by-name list approach, it focuses in residents or people that are in that area that have touchpoints in that area, that are not just coming on a train or coming from another jurisdiction because they heard that. It really is focused strategically on those that are long-term residents of an area and trying to help those folks first and doing it in a much more strategic way. And then homeless prevention services. What we are also seeing, and I think that all of us have someone that they know of, it maybe is on social security and SSI or our minimum wage worker, and with that $3,000 a month rent, your $2,900 a month in rent is not paying the bills and it's not keeping you housed. And so really focusing on the homeless prevention piece as well, whether that's short-term rental assistance, shallow subsidies, flexible funds for someone who might just need security deposit assistance or work on a vehicle so that they can get to work, but really focusing as well on homeless prevention services. Then in terms of the housing piece of it, knowing that not everyone will be quite ready or there will not necessarily be a permanent solution for you tomorrow, we need to still talk about short-term housing resources and that those resources, again, need to be tailored to all the folks that we talked about and that we see in our demographics. So some of the strategic plan options and some that we are already implementing today through the leadership of our council, like Safe Parkland is an option. Knowing that some folks don't always do so well in congregate housing and need a little bit personal privacy, like for example, families that are homeless, we might need to look at some non-congregate housing, whether you want to call them tiny homes, pallet shelters, et cetera, but just housing in a non-congregate setting. And then our Navigation Center that we opened in 2024 and increasing that capacity, we've been able to successfully house folks with our 50 beds. We push the limit sometimes, and there is definitely a need. As you saw from our homeless count, we've got still a huge number. 75 beds still probably isn't enough to answer every person that is on that point-in-time count. And then in looking at that Navigation Center and increasing that capacity, doing an assessment, we started that assessment, what are the community's needs? Is the navigation serving our seniors? Is it serving families, females, that are a good portion of our homeless? But really taking a look and see, are there things that we've learned through this year of operation and looking at our community today that we could do better with the Navigation Center? And then of course motel vouchers, we've explored that option and implemented it in the past. It is part of the ERF model, but really again more as a short-term and a waiting room type of housing solution, but not a permanent solution. Then as we move into permanent housing, we just need permanent housing all across the board. For our working families, for those at risk of being homeless and those that are currently homeless today. For those that are homeless or at risk of homelessness, that permanent supportive housing that's really tied to social services is really key because there are extreme challenges that folks are dealing with. And so to be successful in maintaining stable housing, the social service aspect of it is really key. And that's what we're providing for you as an option. Also, maybe it isn't just an apartment community that is the long-term option. There are programs like shared housing. Just think of your college-age kid who's renting a room from someone else or seniors who've opened a room up to house someone else. That's shared housing. Rapid rehousing, getting folks who are in the potential of losing their housing, getting them housed right away so they don't fall into the deep cycles of homelessness. And then really key, permanent housing for our homeless is not true housing unless it goes hand-in-hand with support services. And we've already started to make a dent in that permanent housing solution through the leadership of the council last year in June 2024. We put out a NOFA, you awarded three projects, and they are well underway. Greenbrier Village opened with 60 units last year. South River Village opened with 43 units last year. That's a total of 103 units that were brought online last year. And these are the 100% affordable housing units and not the density bonus projects of 10 or 15. These are 100% affordable units. So that's 103 units brought online in 2024. El Camino Real, which you awarded funds to, is in the entitlement process. They've been awarded their tax credit and bond financing. They're looking to break ground sometime in the spring with 1111 units. Seago's will be a project that you will see in March of this year. They applied as well and were successful at receiving their tax credit and bond financing. And you probably heard in the newspaper that they also were awarded $48 million in sustainable community funds. So that project as well should break ground this year. That's 290 units of 100% affordable housing that'll break ground in 2025. Still in the offering and in the entitlement process and looking to also submit for the vital tax credit and bonds is Olive Park Apartments. They did apply in January. Shadow Way Apartments, 43 units, that's an acquisition rehab that also applied to the NOFA, but we did not fund them. But they're still moving forward, 43 units. And then South Coast Villas, looking to apply in March for tax credits for 56 units. So those three projects, if they're awarded successfully this year, will start breaking ground in 2026. So we have a total of 691 affordable units in the pipeline from 2024 through 2026. So in terms of public health and safety for all, looking at the public health-focused interventions, I'm really looking at what we call, some people may call it street medicine, but really not deploying fire department to handle necessarily every healthcare incident that might occur with our homeless, but that there is a more proactive approach to providing healthcare to our homeless out in the community. Recognizing that the most vulnerable in our community in the encampments need to get to shelter quickly. And so having priority referrals of those that we are coming across out in the field and doing our work to getting them into shelter, that we may need additional resources for clearing the encampment areas. One of the limitations of the ERF funding is that it does not cover, it's a pathway to housing, but it does not cover the cleanup, the maintenance, and the ongoing monitoring of these encampment areas. So we feel that there is a need to dedicate some specific resources to that part of the program. And then again, the ongoing monitoring and enforcement of cleared areas so that we don't have folks inhabiting those areas again. And then to the sustainability part, as Jonathan alluded to, our homeless manager starts February 24th. And we envision that that homeless manager will be the lead in the interdepartmental coordination and even in the coordination with our regional partners. But that we need to do a job of making sure, as you heard from tonight, there's not one department in this city, from libraries, parks, and our law enforcement, public safety, that does not have a piece of homelessness or does not deal with homeless within our community. And then the regional collaboration with our neighboring cities, ERF, was just the start. We partnered with the City of Carlsbad to share the resources that we have available in our city with the resources that they have available and funding this program to the tune of $11.4 million. So that's the start of our regional collaboration. But no one city, especially smaller cities, can do it alone. And so we need to leverage as much as we can leverage. And then making sure that any program that we come up with in this soon-to-be strategic action plan, that it's really aligned with best practices, whether it's the Regional Community Plan with the Regional Task Force on the Homeless or what we're seeing other successful cities do that have been able to manage their homeless issues and actually decrease. What are they doing and align ourselves with them and to learn from them? And then nothing can be done without dollars. We recognize that we need to pursue funding opportunities as they become available. And that way, we can better understand, we're going to come up with a strategic action plan. We hope that as we move along, that we will identify those funding opportunities for areas in the future that we can assign to each of those initiatives. So with that, what we are asking the city council to do this evening is to direct staff to start working on an updated action plan. It's been since 2019. We've been doing the work, absolutely, we've been doing the work. But we're looking for a much more formal, structured approach that will result in more impactful and directed strategies. And so to provide that direction based upon the four focus areas that we've talked about and to start that work, beginning with tonight, hearing from the community, what they feel are the needs of our community, how they've been impacted, and what some potential solutions are that we should be looking at. Our hope is to come back to you all. Our hope would be to come back to you all likely in June with an update on that progress. At that time, we would know what our 2025 point-in-time count numbers are. So we'll be able to give you a better assessment of who we think is out there in the community and what the needs are. We will have identified, had been able to take some time to really identify dollars that can be matched to programs. We'll hopefully also be underway with listening sessions that we intend to hold with community stakeholders, the general public, our commissions, and our community partners. And then all with the goal that by September 2025, we're going to bring to you a strategic action plan that we can stand behind, that we hope will reduce homelessness within the City of Oceanside and bring more well-being to our community overall. And so with that, that concludes staff's presentation. I think we can open it up to questions and comments and then begin the public process of testimony.
Thank you very much, Ms. Heinz. I did have a question, though. You set out the headlines, right, the four focus? That was the slide before you, the last slide? Yeah, there you go. Pathways to Solutions. So they are encompassed in the recommendation that is on the first page of your staff report.
Yes.
That's correct, okay. So, because I was, I see these words within that recommendation. And so, but you have them more set out as four focus points.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I believe we have 10 people who would like to speak on this item?
We currently have 12 now.
12, okay, let's get started.
Okay. I think some more people are trying to...
Did you want to have questions that, sorry, do we have? Yes, okay, fantastic. My apologies, just hold on there. We do, Ms. Heinz, we do have questions from the dais before we go to the public based on the presentation, sorry, didn't mean to let you go so quickly.
And I will say, I do have two very capable staff members here with me this evening as well.
Yes, maybe they can sit at the side here.
Sal Ramon is here, he's our senior management analyst.
Yeah, could they sit here, up here, so that they won't have to come back and forth?
And Sophia Hughes, I wanted to introduce Sophia Hughes. She's the newest member of our housing team here. She actually will be the person that leads the ERF project in coordination with Sal Ramon. So they're available to answer any of the very specific technical questions that you might have.
These are questions based on your presentation. So first, we have Deputy Mayor Joyce. Followed by Councilmember Figueroa.
Thank you so much. Just a couple of questions before we go to public comment because I want to make sure that there's any ambiguity between some of the things. So can we pull up the HCV slide, the vouchers slide? Thank you. Of these vouchers, how many of them are actively being used? I know that's a pretty detailed. Do you have like an abouts of how much? I know some of these are going into new projects, all the latitude in the world, but just curious if we have a general idea of half of these are being used?
So as you know, the City of Oceanside is its own public housing authority. We have a maximum allocation of almost 1,500 vouchers. We have a 10-year waiting list. The demand for this program is extreme, whether you're homeless or you are... And I will say... And I will say that our program, that 1,500 vouchers is nearly an at-risk housing preservation type of program. Nearly 70% of our, 68% of our clients are at that $25,000 limit. They, if not for this program, they would be homeless. And so it's very well utilized. Some of these are very specific. For example, the VASH program, we're probably at about a 65% lease-up rate. So there is room. We have been utilizing, knowing that we have a very tight and expensive rental market, the projects that we talked about, the long-term affordable housing projects, we have been dedicating handful of VASH vouchers to those projects, but it has availability there. Mainstream can be one that also has a little bit of availability. As we see people that are on our, they may apply for our general HCV or voucher program, but if we see that they fit within one of these categories, in order to get them housed more quickly, we may move them into our special purpose voucher. But most of them are pretty full. I'm going to let Sal speak to it. He works directly with our Section 8 staff in trying to utilize all of these vouchers.
Deputy Mayor Joyce, so I'll give you the estimate numbers, but just with the caveat that the numbers are constantly changing, even today. So for FUP, like Alon said, they're about 50% capacity. The opening doors are always near full, so I would say there's none available. POFA, that one is, because it's such a very special group, it is, I believe, also 50%, a little bit under 50%.
Before you go on, can I ask you a question? For that one, does that have to be in a, I mean, I assume you'd have to use that somewhere where there'd be wraparound services, right? There'd be fully supportive. So is there a lack of, like, we don't have the projects that actually have the services in place?
For the Project One For All, there was...
Yes, and I would, and same for the mainstream, I would assume there'd need to be some supportive services or a very specific type of unit? Is that kind of part of the challenge of getting those out?
So specifically for the Project One For All, that is in agreement with mental health systems, where they provide the supportive services and the housing authority provides the rental subsidy. So that one, they are the specific referral mechanism. For mainstream, that one uses our waitlist. We go through the waitlist and prioritize those who are experiencing homelessness and have identified someone in their household with a disability.
Okay.
That one does not come with supportive services.
Okay. And then the rest are around the same, between 50% to 70% or 80% takeout? Okay, thank you. I had a question about, this is skipping around, the calls for service at 11%. Just want to be clear, that was any police or any call for service to our public services that mentioned the word homelessness, right? I just want to make sure that we're...
That is my understanding, and I'll have to...
Sorry, chief. We got lots of chairs, y'all can pull up.
Up here, too.
Afternoon, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. That is correct. We use actually the word transient as a trigger word. So any call for service where that word is captured in the call would trigger that number. So there could be some that we missed, but that's generally a good number to go by.
Okay. And so that would be, that could be, like, some of those could be things that just get pushed to code enforcement, for instance, like a call asking about an encampment, and then we would refer it to a different line, or?
Not necessarily, because we work with code enforcement, so it would go to our encampment detail team or our crime suppression team, who work with code enforcement. So we don't, we won't send it to code enforcement, we partner with code enforcement.
Okay. All right, thank you. I was just trying to better understand what that impact looked like.
Councilmember Figueroa?
Yeah, I have kind of, they're all over the place, but for the first question, for my first question, with the numbers captured in HMIS or that were reported in HMIS, I think, at least for 2024, do we know how many of those individuals were self-reported or tracked as experiencing homelessness for the first time?
That light's tricky.
I think you need a few... Councilmember Figueroa, so yes, that report does report on those who experience homelessness for the first time. I don't have that number in front of me, but that's something I can get back to.
Okay. Yes, please. And then for Slide 11, we mentioned, it was mentioned on there in regards to, had the percentage breakdown of those that had physical and mental health conditions that were self-reported. Was that 100% of the people captured in HMIS? Or that was a percentage breakdown of those who self-reported to have a mental or physical disability?
That is a total percentage of those who self-reported, correct.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure that that was, when folks saw that slide on Slide 11, it wasn't that 100% captured in HMIS had a mental or physical condition. And so this is more referring to the ERF project. I've had folks ask me, when we do the encampment, after that place, after that encampment area has been cleared up, is there going to be a heart structure or some type of barrier that's going to go in there afterwards? Or do we not know yet?
Councilmember Figueroa, so it's going to vary because of the different properties and some of it's public, some of it's private. Each encampment zone within the area is going to have a different closure plan.
Okay. And Carlsbad will support beyond the ERF to?
Yeah, so Carlsbad is working with their partners, and we're working jointly to come up with individualized closure plans for each subzone as we move through the encampment area.
And then when, I know in the report it mentioned having a housing navigator. Now, is that housing navigator, what are we looking for in regards to professional experience? Is that someone that has experience operating with landlords, like having a landlord engagement person? And also for like the stabilization, what does that look like outside of just having one case manager do it all?
So I think that the primary thing that the, and I don't want to speak for the recruitment of the providers, but I think the main thing that we look at is having the skillset of being able to provide trauma-informed care. So it's the level of support services that they provide. I also think that one of the other things, the network that they are involved in. So oftentimes, we'll look at the experience that they have and the network that they're involved in with their previous experience.
Two more questions. With, I didn't see anything on the report, and I just want, you know, make a note of it, to have some level of support when we talk about our master plan with this in regards to what's going to be our support or cooperation, collaboration, coordination with our grassroots efforts that are taking place right now that have been very effective in our boots on the ground and are doing good work in our city. What does that look like for the city to not have barriers for grassroots that are doing this work? And also, how can we support those efforts?
I'm just going to speak to that because I feel very strongly about that. Homelessness is a very complex and challenging issue. It's everything from poverty to just health issues. Government is not the only answer. We have to be able to partner with anyone who wants to serve in this capacity and to help our community along. Grassroots, faith-based can be a big part of that solution in that they are really mission-driven to solving these issues and to addressing the needs of the homeless. So I think that whatever policy or action plan comes forward is going to look at whoever we can leverage and partner with to really reach that end goal. So while we may not have listed that here, absolutely, it's not just partnering with RTFH or the cities of Carlsbad, but our community at large, who are interested in helping and housing our homeless.
And I think that needs to be in the plan, because as much as we all may agree, 10, 15, 20 years from now, if it's not in writing, we want to continue to make sure that we're supporting those efforts. We talked about multidisciplinary cross jurisdiction. What does coordinated entry for data entry and even access look like? Is everyone bought into using HMIS? Is that how we're going to coordinate these efforts?
Councilmember Figueroa, that's a great question. It's actually a requirement to partner, and it's in the contract. We actually just completed our build-out for the management system. So the ERF, it's its own build-out, and each agency will actually have the ability to enter data as their separate agency onto this program that's been built out within the database.
But we do require that on every contract we enter into.
And we audit the nonprofits or those that we contract with to make sure that they're using HMIS?
That's correct.
Last question. Last year, the county created the sleeping cabins, and they were looking for providers and land. I don't know if they have any left, but tiny homes was mentioned on here. Has there been any places that we've looked at that could potentially, we can implement those?
So the biggest limitation on, because those are free, right? Is the land, is where do we cite them? Where do we have the availability of land? So that would be a potential strategy within that action plan is to identify pieces of property that we could, whether it's tiny homes, whether it's another shelter, but identifying land.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Also, Councilmember Robinson has some questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, we're going to have time for more questions after the public?
Right, yes, we're going to be talking, discussing...
Yeah, I'm going to hold all my, most of them, except for one. You talked about the strategic plan. Are you using a consultant to help put that together, or is that just going to be all in-house? And that's the only question I have for you right now.
Well, I'm hoping our new homeless manager, if she's listening, is going to take the lead on that. We haven't gone that far as to whether or not we hire for that. Or again, as Jonathan had talked about, the experience of our homeless manager, I think I would defer to them when they come on board as to what her preference would be. She has a wealth of experience, and so I would, I would leave that to her, her direction or your direction.
Okay, no other questions at this time. We'd like to go, I'd like to go ahead and go to the public, or 10 speakers?
15 right now. All right, our first speaker is Carlos Delgado, to be followed by Dennis Pinnick from the Brother Benno Foundation. We do have two available podiums, so as you see your name up on the screen, please make your way down to the next available podium. Thank you.
Your Honorable Mayor, delegates, and Council, and the proud community of Oceanside. I'm proud to be here. Being a homeless person myself, I have input. And it's not that I think this is the proper solution. I believe it's, what I feel is the proper solution. They need a sense of self-reliance and contribution to the community. And they can't do it if they're being babysitted, maybe, you know, like tampered. They need to be given a serious, strict disciplinary strategy to make themselves reliant. And I suggest a work camp, a large work camp, like Pendleton Camp over here, a boot camp to discipline them, to harden them, make them strong, and capable of sharing their abilities with the community to contribute to the community. Because right now, the community is more important. And if homeless people are being tampered, they're not contributing nothing, not even to themselves. There's an old saying that feed the man fish, and he's hungry, feed him more fish. But if you teach him how to fish, he'll be more reliant, he'll be able to take care of himself and take care of others as well. So I believe in the process of sharing. I believe that homeless people right now are too unstable on the mental level to be, in my opinion, trusted. They're going to be begging, they're going to be wanting more, they're going to work less. They're not going to contribute nothing. They're just going to be users and abusers. So I would suggest a work camp with some kind of daily pay. Right now, we can start with a daily pay. Get them to work at least, make enough money, so if they don't want to be here, take the Greyhound, take the bus, and get lost. You know, if you're here, you're not contributing, you're a nuisance. I've seen the library here, the washroom being destroyed, you know, by violence. I've seen it everywhere. I've been to Tennessee, Nashville, Florida, Chicago, Portland, I've been everywhere, San Francisco. And that's all I see is destruction, violence. They think that the, they think that the public property, how they get, how they get back at you, that's violence. That's, that's something you don't want in your community, potential criminals, let me put it that way. So to give them like an apartment shelter is not, to me, I wouldn't recommend it, because they would just take advantage of you people, you good people. You know, like the prodigal son, you know, he would, they would take advantage of, you know, of your generosity and your goodness. So I think, oh.
Thank you, Mr. Delgado.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dennis Pinnick, talked to you this morning.
You did? Thank you. I just want to, you know, I had this thing and I wrote it out, but I just want to talk from the heart because I think that's important. I want to thank you all for your service that you give to this community. I want to especially thank Mayor Esther Sanchez for a few months ago, putting the amendment on that started this whole thing, the Housing Department. I read through the staff report. It's, you know, it's a comprehensive report, but it's on, it's spot-on. You really address, you know, you see what the issues are, and they are complex and they're diverse. I think a lot of people have a misconception of what Brother Benno's is. You think of Brother Benno's and you think, oh, well, we're serving the homeless, which we are. But a big part of our population is the working poor, and we're watching more and more of those people fall into homelessness. A lot of people don't know it, but we have rental assistance that we've been doing for years each month. We used to run out of that last year in about two weeks or three weeks. This year, we run out of it in three days, and we've increased the budget for it. So it shows that there's a bigger need to try and keep people and prevent homelessness. I'm going to run out of time, I know, but I want to say Greenbrier Village has been, so far, has been a very successful project because it has supportive services around it. And it's taken some people with a lot of very challenging issues that, you know, would have a lot of problems staying in a housed situation and given them the support so that they've been successful so far. I'll be interested to see what that looks like in another year. I hope it continues to work out. Also, it's a very small footprint, so it brings a lot of people into housing. So I think that's something that we, you know, that I would hope everybody would really look, look at. What I, what I want to offer to the Housing Department, to us, and all the people that are serving the community, you know, the grassroots that you talked about, is we have 40 years of experience in this, and we have our finger on the pulse. Please, please contact us, and we want to be helpful and we want to share our experience. So we think we have to do this all together. It's not just individuals. So again, have a blessed evening, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Pinnick. Frank Alcala, followed by William Keith. We do have two podiums, by the way. Mr. Alcala?
My first experience with the homeless here, when I came to Oceanside, I've been living here 10 years. I was down at the harbor, and I saw a homeless, and I was just asking him... I was down at the harbor and I saw a homeless and I was just asking him how he was doing. He goes, oh, yeah. He knew all the shelters or he knew all the, where they give food and everything, it was great. And so I said, how long you been here in Oceanside? Oh, I've only been here one year. Oh, yeah, where you from? He goes, Wyoming. Wyoming? I said, how'd you get here? He goes, all I know is they gave me a one-way ticket. Oh, okay. What I'm trying to say here, all this programs you have, you can house all the, all the, all the people that are homeless right now, and guess what? You'll have 50 more. The word gets out there that City of Oceanside is housing everybody and they'll come over here. That's just the way homeless is. It's a problem. I thank you guys that we have programs for the homeless. My beef is this, and it happened to me just a week ago. There was somebody homeless there on Vista Way and I didn't know whether it was a he or she because, you know, it was a sleeping bag and I reported it. I said, she needs to be a welfare check or something. They didn't do nothing about it. The next time, because I, it's right across LA Fitness and I go to LA Fitness three times a week. The next time I went, this was a Bein Wednesday, the homeless was still there, but this time it was a tent. So this time, I asked the, the city hall or the clerk to direct me who was in charge of the homeless. And I talked to somebody, I can't remember who, I think it was Chavez that I talked to, he's in charge of the homeless. And I told him what the situation was. He goes, okay, we'll take care of it. Then the next time I went, today's there, she was still there or he was still there. I said, hey, I reported it. It's, it's, you know, the, I'm not against homeless, but I don't like homeless to be somewhere where there's traffic and moving because it looks like we as a city don't care about the homeless. And they should be, I'm not saying that they should be removing, well, if they can put them in a shelter, great. But the thing is, it doesn't look good when it's a lot of traffic and you see this person camping right around the middle of the sidewalk. Okay. So when I asked them, I said, hey, they still, I was, he goes, all I can do is tell her to move, I think he said her, I tell her to move. I said, well, did she move? He goes, that's all we can do. I said, wait a minute. I think Governor Newsom put an executive, well, let's put it, the Supreme Court came out and said that the homeless didn't have the constitutional right to, to do a camp in a public place. And then Governor Newsom put an executive order saying that it was up to every city to deal with the homeless. So I asked him about that. I said, well, you can't just tell them not to move, you got to remove them, you know, whether, with the police or whatever the case would be. He goes, my hands are tied. I said, so what's, what's the policy for the, for the City of Oceanside on this executive order that Newsom put out? And he couldn't really give me. And so I found out information that they're having this meeting here today. So I'm asking you, the city council, what is your policy for homeless camping out in public places? Okay?
Right. Thank you very much. Perhaps we, I hope the chief is able to, or our staff is able to respond to that question because it's not against the law to be homeless, just not to be able to sleep. Okay. William Keith, followed by Janelle Coker.
Okay. I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council and those behind me right there for letting me speak right now. Okay, I'm going to be pretty much curt and straight to the point, you know? One thing I've done is I'm a full-fledged senior citizen right now. Okay? I would like to remind all present that homelessness as we know it here in the year 2025 is still a plan, created culture. It's a plan, created environment. I am an honorably discharged United States Army veteran. I am also many other good things. I have frequented the shelters here in San Diego off and on for many years. Uh-oh. I am familiar with the psychological warfare brought not only to me, but to many veterans and others at BVSD and the Alpha Project. And I'm sure there's other shelters out there that are, where they're, they're not all bad. There's a lot of good staff that work at shelters. I am also familiar with certain staff who go out of their way to trigger triggers of veterans and those alike. I support new and improved shelters. I also believe at the same time, before we move forward, the existing shelter system that we're familiar with, whether it's in Oceanside or San Diego, it's a no-brainer that is broken. Maybe we want to fix the existing shelters and then move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Janelle Coker, followed by Larry Warner. We do have two, two podiums. If you want to, Mr. Warner, start heading to the other podium. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Janelle Coker. I am a pastor at the Oceanside Sanctuary. Thank you for doing this, our esteemed mayor, deputy mayor and councilmembers. The Oceanside Sanctuary often sees people who are experiencing homelessness in part because we run a pantry that gives about 7,000 pounds of food away a month. And our goal is to try to make a difference for those who are struggling with their rents and are not going to be sent out because they can't afford rent and the cost of food. We do also see people who are experiencing homelessness. It is not always the mentally ill or the drug addicted. It can be women with their young children. It can be people with disabilities. And we work really hard, I work very hard being just down the street, on a pretty weekly basis to try to call and get help. We have a benevolence program that our church funds, so we will get people back with their families. But I can tell you that I'm willing to be a partner, but I don't really have anyone to call other than the police, which we're very happy to have the police. But the hot team is often not available and they are the police. And I've been told over and over again, it is not illegal to be homeless. And so all I have is to call a punitive organization who scares the living daylights out of some of these folks because they don't know how they're going to be treated. There is an immediate feeling that they are actually going to be arrested and so there's a lack of trust. I know that this budget also pays a great deal of money for security guards. So I would like to ask how Esther Sanchez may be working with other mayors and the county to get the mobile mental health unit and social workers available for me to make calls and say, hey, I've got somebody who really needs help. Sal is lovely and I call him a lot and I'm sure he's not thrilled that I'm always emailing and calling and saying, hey, I've got somebody here who really wants help. What can we do? The church will pay for a night in a hotel or can the city pay for it? Can we get them some help? We want to be a solution. And finally, before this turns red, I will also say, it's my understanding, we do not have a homeless court in Oceanside. So when we're giving those tickets away for being, for having rain gear over your heads, I don't know how those folks get to homeless court. The church is happy to give our basement to court, like we're happy to help. Please bring us in.
Thank you. And I do believe that the homeless coordinator will be the person you'll be able to contact starting February 24th, did you say?
Starting February 24th.
Right. And there'll be a direct line. Mr. Berg, go, go ahead and answer.
Yeah, I'll just go ahead and address that question. Yeah, so certainly that's one of the, you know, one of the benefits of having someone who's dedicated to homelessness full-time. I will say also, and I think we'll get into this discussion as we get further into deliberations, but also, you know, it is our goal to also deploy more social workers in the community that can be the first point of contact, which would provide additional flexibility in terms of having the availability of resources out on the streets. So, you know, I believe that should probably come up through the discussions later on as well.
Well, and I hope we can get the county involved. They should be part of this. Mayor Gloria just pointed that out from San Diego. I hope we can work together with other cities to try to push the county.
Actually, MCRT is already in Oceanside.
Right.
And I will add one thing while, I'm sorry, but we actually have had homeless court rotate in the city on occasion. So it has happened and certainly is an option in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Warner, followed by Ms. Rocco.
Yes, thank you for your time. In listening to the report, actually, I'm very encouraged. Ticked a lot of boxes off that I was going to comment on. Now, we are going to have a homeless outreach coordinator, check. We're going to have a BNL list, check. We're going to have a housing navigator, check. But what we need is, we need coordination. Like we have a lot of things that, that are geared to crisis response. But inflow, how are we going to keep people from becoming unhoused?
Repetitive, right.
Especially with the seniors. Outflow, what is our commitment going to be to permanent housing with the services, the wraparound services that council, council member Eric Joyce mentioned? And I think that's key. We, and we also need real-time, specific person data that goes to Oceanside so that we know, hey, this person was at the navigation center and here's what, here's what their caseworkers did. It goes into the system. Now, we said it's going to go in the system. We need to keep up to make sure that's happening, not on an annual report, but a monthly or a bi-monthly kind of things that we see that this stuff is happening. You know, one of the things that Mr. Roman said was, hey, we need to celebrate what we did. In 2004, we had 1,000, we served 1,071 people and we housed 105 people. That is under 10%. Nationwide, the average is around 30%. That's not, that's not good. We have a lot of silo things, but this is a chance to bring all of it together, plus the nonprofits, plus the churches, plus all the people who are involved in it, the Michaels and the Jordans and all those people who are doing those, their thing. And I think we can work together. The goal is not to have more people in shelter, the goal is to have people housed. And so we, so whenever we hear unsheltered or sheltered, we need to still hear unhoused. And our goal has to be getting those housing units ready so that we can move people in. And wow, I have 30 seconds left, so I'll do a little dance and I'll be done. But, but I'm encouraged, bottom line. Let's work the plan and let's continue to have open communication with the community and with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Cindy Rocco, followed by Erin Moran, Morin?
Morin.
Morin.
Hi, my name is Cindy Rocco and I'm just wanted to say a couple of things just as far as solutions first, so I get that out of the way. And one of the things is that if we're having a homeless person to keep, that I honestly believe that we need to fund a budget for housing, have a staff that takes ownership of the results and is accountable instead of all the nonprofits. I honestly believe we need to fund that. And Sal Ramon has just been amazing and really helped me with getting somebody, it was your referral, out of the alley and into a house now after 11 and a half months, but advocating did work. One of the primary things is, like right now, it's raining outside. So if we did CUP so the churches could house people, like I know Oceanside Sanctuary is awesome. Also is to set that more safe lots and that would be a primary thing too, so that, and I know that up at the training center, where the navigation center is, there's just a lot of, there's just a plethora of land for people to temporarily go there right now, especially during the rainy season. Third would be to get that ERF plan to come into the riverbed because that's another high priority within the city. So to put that in, that would be a secondary. Excuse me. So then the other thing is to, well, the big thing was staff budget, but then to put on and go assertively to get a tenure list for Section 8 is ridiculous. And there's a lot of qualifiers, there's all that regular, you know, there's not, there's a lot of regular people that need that. So to go to the state and get more Section 8 vouchers, especially from the state because they had so much budget. I think we rely too much on the nonprofits. I mean, we're really stressing that out. So, and I also think like Oceanside, I mean, Carlsbad does, is we need to contribute to Brother Benno's. And so now, this might be the hard part for me, but I used to be a multimillionaire and right now, I was on the floor praying that I could keep my house with double mortgage. So whatever the issues are that made me to this point, right now, Brother Benno's is keeping a roof over my head. I go there and I get food. In the beginning, I didn't realize that I was, I had a food scarcity. And then when I went there, I had a freezer full of bread because I thought, I'm going to run out of bread. You know, and then churches and organizations that go down there and pray to be hot and have four papers in the morning. And, oh, this was a food scarcity thing. There's less food. Hang on.
Are you showing everything from the pantry?
Oh my God. Brother Benno's does more for the city than we have ever, ever realized. We criticize it and say, oh, it's ugly, it's this, it's that, but no. And now that Paul McNamara has come in there, Mac, because I was going there in the beginning and I had to get there at 3:00 AM to go traveling through, to get some food. And now it is so organized, it is like incredible, the things they offer there, from the showers to, I mean, the meals, the food pantry is now in a warehouse. I mean, they do everything there. You know, they even have a dental thing come out. And I had to go to the dent, I had a toothache, so I went to the dental RV. I mean, it sounds like, you know, someone, I just didn't realize that, you know, the higher you are in life, the harder you fall. And I was literally on my kitchen floor praying and crying. So I know, I just wanted to say that Brother Benno's, like the City of Oceanside, the City, the City of Carlsbad should be giving money to Brother Benno's because they do more for us than the city on their dime. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Ms. Morin, followed by Juan Canet?
All right, no. Take your time. Take your time. I'm, I'm patient. All right. Good?
Hello, my name is Erin Morin. I think that the city did a good job in their plan, but I think we have a very bigger, much bigger problem in that we're having too much bonus density and the rent and the things. I think that's more of a bigger problem and I think we should put more shelters. I think we should work with more developers to see about adding more low-income housing to their property. Because it's a problem. They're, they're talking about what, how many, I mean, how many units aside on a bonus property? It's just, it's, it's not, it's not good. And we should be working with developers that, who, who can, who can have, who have visions in housing, but say, hey, you know what? Would you help us with this? Could you help with the Section 8? Could you help with these issues that we're having? Because people are not making rent. That is a major, major problem. And people have low-income jobs, they're working poor, they're barely making ends meet, they can only afford so much. And then we got our mobile home parks. We need to keep those. We need to keep those going. That's a senior, that, that right there, it really does help the low-income families. Even if we had, even if we had a project where we can assist them with new mobile homes if they're out of zone or out of date or old or, you know, they're getting kind of dis shuffled or just helping them to rebuild them. We, we need to do more of that and less of, well, I'm going to charge 13, $2,000, $2,400 a month for a low-income housing. I'm like, who can afford that? Nobody can afford that. And I know someone I'm bowling with who's working poor and living in his truck. And he, and the, and all our bowling, all the bowling community in our, in my league started giving him money to pay off what he can afford to fix on his car. And this is just, this is really sad. And the cities do need to work together on getting something strong.
Thank you very much. Juan Cadet, followed by Lane Stewart.
Good evening, my name is Juan Canet. Regarding today's meeting, I think it is a complex issue revolving around multiple factors. I think new and feasible long-term solutions are needed. I also acknowledge many stigmas revolving around this issue, which I observed were mentioned earlier in this meeting. I would like to bring a potential idea to the table of hiring social or caseworkers. Their jobs can revolve around rehabilitation, employment, job and skill training if needed, and assisting them back in their feet. If we have one person successfully rehabilitated a week, that can potentially be 52 persons a year assisted by these casework, each caseworker. I also think a database of specific needs need to be tracked, and that is another facet to further facilitate fixing this issue. In closing, I recognize there are many more solutions needed, but I think this is an idea to bring to the table. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cadet.
Good evening, my name's Lane Stewart, and this is not the first homeless workshop that I've attended, but I do like what I've heard so far. But I believe the main reason we're here is looking for compassionate solutions, because without compassion for our fellow man, we're really not looking at the big picture. And that involves a lot of things, because each person that's experiencing homelessness from the ones that I have met all have a different reason or a different way that they arrived at that particular juncture. Some, it's because that's the way they want. Others, it's mental illness or some of the other things that were described earlier. And so what I've looked at when I was listening earlier is, it's going to be, there is going to be a public cost to help those folks that are less fortunate by choice or by whatever other means that got them there. And what does that look like? Well, we've looked at what it costs with 11,000 calls for police and fire to look at this, and what does that look like financially, but also as taking away from what they could be doing and putting their skilled resources somewhere else? So what do we do about that? Well, we've looked at matching grants, you know, and I know the city has in-lu fees from builders. Is there a way to put up some of that money to look for matching grants to help build, you know, transitional or permanent housing? And that being said, if we're working with wraparound services to, as you use the word rehabilitate, or put a place where these people, the people that are in these positions can, you know, feel better about themselves, does this help lead them to a place of employment so they will become self-sufficient, so the city doesn't have to provide, as it looks like, 500 to 600 houses a year, every year going forward? Is this, you know, transitional housing into permanent housing permanent? And how do we do something to make it self-sufficient? And when I was looking at that El Camino Real, 111 rooms, low income, it said very low and low income, and I didn't understand why they needed 11 spaces that were prepared for EV chargers and three electric vehicles, parking spaces designated to that one. It doesn't look like the population that would be serviced by this particular facility would be in need, that type of stuff. Couldn't that build another room or provide more social or something kind of a redeeming quality, other than just saying, you know, is it state law or is that a requirement or something that these new developments have to have these services, which don't seem to really apply in this particular situation? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Steve Burrell, followed by Max Dispozti.
Oceanside advocate for the have littles and the have nots, and particularly, I like to think of myself, especially an advocate for older people like myself. If you look at the statistics that we saw so graphically, the biggest growth is in that area, I'm glad to say.
Seniors.
I just want to start out, I should have started out first, but a moment of silence to the people who have died who are homeless, the faceless people who are out there, and we have to take some accountability and responsibility for that, in my opinion. We're not up to the par, to the challenge. We haven't met them. We've disappointed these people, we've let them down. We can do better, and we will do better. One of the things that I feel strongly about is civic engagement. We need to be more engaged around this issue, the community, and you can help us do that. I'll volunteer, I'll volunteer tonight, be on a committee or whatever it takes. A lot of us have ideas, what needs to be done, and some of us have bothered to do the research and the homework, I might say. For example, I think we should look at the programs that encourage people to share their homes, to share a room and rent out, because where are we going to get the numbers of homes and shelters that we need? We can't build them, we can't even hope to build. So we got to be creative, let's be more creative. I've got an idea about ADUs, people sharing their homes and converting their garages, some of them even single-car garages, and I've talked to people about that, and they love that idea. We just need to help them do that. It costs quite a bit of money to build an ADU, but you can build them rather cheaply, nowhere near the cost of new homeless shelters, not even close. So I think we need to look at what we have and make the best of it, and realize we're in a very expensive place, and we're not going to come up with the resources to do that. So one last thing I would say, I want to see some review of what we are doing. In particular, I want to see some review of the police officers who go around in these bands and supposedly serve the homeless. The homeless I've talked to say you can get a kiosk and do a much better job, and they're not doing them any service, but you refer them to somebody who has a waiting list of eight years. That's not helping them. We need to look at what we have, and we need some accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. Max Dispozti, followed by Esperanza Sapiro.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. I'm really happy that we are at the beginning of this work, and I think this workshop is definitely in the right direction. There is a lot, the complexity of unhoused dynamics are really complex. I think education is important, because sometimes our own citizens thinks they want a fast, a quick solution, because no one wants to see the inhumanity of having unhoused folks. But at the same time, we have to be honest and direct about how complex the problem is, because it's not going to resolve just through Oceanside, right? It's a state, a federal problem. So there are two things that I think in prioritizing our focus is the prevention aspect of it. It's really important that we focus also how we prevent people from falling into homelessness, right? Being unhoused today is an issue that's going to be for senior, for young adults that are just entering the workforce. We have an issue of rent control, I mean, an issue not having rent control, because that could also carve some of these issues. So everything that's been done, I think, is good. I like the approach of our grant application that looks about social services, not just forcing intervention into others, it's about really unorganic work. And I speak today also as a service provider, and we're serving unhoused folks in the community. I agree with the gentleman before, language is really important, folks. It's not about being politically correct, it's about bringing back humanity to the people who are experiencing temporary unhouseness, and it really destigmatized, because one of the problems we have as well, indirectly, cautiously, unconsciously, is really creating more stigma into a population that's already suffering from that. So I think focusing on programs that prevent people from falling into homelessness. Another thing is, I know we stipulated several contracts with local service providers. I think a shelter, a 30-day shelter, I believe it was 30, not 60, is not a resolution of the dynamics of, and how people need more time. A lot of people don't want to go into a shelter because they have to give up their belonging to go there and then go back on the streets after 30 days, it's not a solution, we need to rethink that, so I hope we have time for that. Another thing about the data the city showed today, I take it all will be, there is a concern showing a data that also doesn't share, the LGBT population, the state of California mandates, the requirement of collecting the data, the partners that we partner with are not purposely doing that, and then it shows up, oh, this is a population that we're serving. As at the LGBT Center alone, we serve 160 families from preventing them falling into homelessness this year alone, I mean, 2024. So I invite that, as we're projecting relationship with new service providers, I know we've done a lot with Interfaith Community Services in the past years, to really make sure that follow-through to the systems the county put in place, so we know who we are serving, we track the records of the outcomes, we know exactly what works and what doesn't work, and it will start from there. So thank you for your time, and thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Dispozti. Esperanza Sapiro, followed by Michael Aplikowski.
Good evening, Council members and mayor and city manager. First, I want to start by thanking you. I'm here today on behalf of Operation Hope North County, which I'm sure you're all very familiar with, I serve as executive director there. I want to start by thanking you for your long history of support of our work, of our mission. I know that you helped us when we first acquired our building, and I want you to let you know that our program is still going strong and thriving. As you know, it's one of the most unique programs in the area. We serve families and single women, we have 12 rooms. Right now, we're at 40 people occupancy, so our shelter is full, and we have a waitlist. We continue outreach services, and we also have our food pantry that is open to the public every Wednesday from 3:00 to 5:00. So I'm here today to let you know that out of the data for this year, we're on track to serve 150 individuals, and the data tells me today that 23 of those individuals come from the city of Oceanside. So I do want to let you know that we are still serving members of Oceanside, we do have a large majority of our pantry members that come from the city of Oceanside that are served weekly through our services. And I want to invite any collaborations with Operation Hope North County, we have a rich history together. We work obviously closely with the city of Vista, but our services are not exclusive to the city of Vista. So please know that we are eager and excited about your strategic plan, about the work that you're doing on behalf of the residents, and we really do welcome collaborations and learning. As you know, we provide case management services to our clients. As of last year, we have a 60% success rate, meaning 60% of our clients exited into a continuum of care. We are constantly learning and growing and evolving in this space and looking to do better and have better collaborations. We will be putting a request in for CD, Community Development Block Grant dollars, and are, you know, eager for additional opportunities for funding. The funding that we get from our government partners is essential to our diversified funding streams. As a nonprofit, the dollars that we get from our city support is essential for sustainability, for diversity of funding, and so that we can keep our program strong, keep serving the community, and keep celebrating their success stories. We see every day people that are resilient, people that really want to be successful, and that want the tools for sustainability. So we support our clients with workforce development opportunities, that's another opportunity we're looking to partner with, we have great ideas around that. So I just wanted to be here tonight to thank you, to let you know that our work is going strong and that your support is invaluable to us and to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Aplikowski, followed by Filippa Rios.
Thank you. My name is Michael Aplikowski, I'm with Convicted for Christ Ministries. We are a grassroots program. We have some men's houses here in Oceanside, we have a wound care unit, street medicine wound care unit in partnership with the Lucky Duck Foundation that we partner with, Humanly Showers to bring to the community. We serve over 400 sustenance bags for lunches to the community at the encampment and the riverbank, Hobby Lobby, and all these other places. We do a bunch of different things. We also distribute over 1,000 pounds of food every week to the community, to people that can't get out to us, so we go to them. First thing I'd like to address is, when we were speaking up here, people were speaking up here, they were talking about the effect that homelessness has on various agencies in our community, and I totally understand that, I do. But I never heard any mention of the effect it has on the person that's homeless. We need to start looking at people differently, as created in an image greater than ourselves, honoring, respecting, and loving that image, and doing that for one another as we stand side by side to do what we're doing. We've got to stop. Couple of things I want to touch on real quickly is, the encampment behind Hobby Lobby, I've been reporting to a particular council member here, what's going on back there. I don't see any supportive services being offered at all. You are creating an atmosphere of fear. People are going into feral areas, and the further from the street we get, the further from society we get. I know this, I was homeless 12 years, self-inflicted, trust me. I accept total responsibility. However, I have an understanding of what happens is you move people further from society, they become feral, it becomes harder to provide the services that we're spending 11.4 million dollars to provide to that area, and we're chasing that area out, oh, into other zip codes that will no longer be allowed services because they're not from Oceanside, they just got this. It's not going to work, guys. It's counterproductive, and I don't think it's what's intended here. I am at that area three to five times a week, I am at that area at midnight, taking people to hospitals, I am at that area constantly. I am in your riverbed, I come from your river. I am an example of how we can help and change people's lives. I have more to say, but no more time to say. Please.
Thank you. Filippa Rios, followed by Sheila Kada.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Honorable City Council. My name is Filippa Rios, I'm the Chief Program Officer for Interfaith Community Services. And Interfaith has been partnering with the city of Oceanside for quite a number of years. I'm really excited to see the plan that the city has put forward. One of my suggestions would be, we need to look at partnering also with the managed care plans, because there are services that can be provided for those who are experiencing homelessness. There are a lot of older adults out there in the community, a lot of our population, you know, is experiencing chronic health conditions, and the managed care plans do have some supports in place that can add to the services that can be provided by the housing navigator, and we need to tap into some of those resources as well. But I agree with what everyone says here, we do need to find our humanity. I mean, anyone who's experiencing homelessness is somebody's son, somebody's brother, somebody's cousin, somebody's family member. One of the things that we do try to do at Interfaith Community Services is provide comprehensive services, and I think that the BYNIM list and bringing all these different providers together will enable the city to be able to do that in a more strategic manner than we've ever done. I do respect everything that the city has to offer, because a lot of the housing options aren't always available in other jurisdictions, so I think the city should be proud of themselves for the services that they have put forward. They have put forward quite a few innovative services, but that collaboration and bringing other resources is also really important. So I want to thank you guys for the comprehensive plan, I want to thank you guys for your partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheila Kada, followed by Jordan Verdin.
I'm Sheila Kada, I live in Arrowood. One thing I want to say is, we have wonderful people like Zeb Navarro that work for the city and our leadership. We are lucky to live in Oceanside, we have great people here, and I've lived all over the United States, so I can tell you that. Anyway, I want to say, do unto others as you would have them do unto you. That is the golden rule. If you were homeless, wouldn't you want to have people help you and give you a home, a roof over your head? I say, we can do it. You know what we do? We send to Israel $3.8 billion a year, and that's a rich country. And you know what Israel did? It supported Russia. And when we asked for weapons that we gave Israel to give to Ukraine to fight Russia, they refused, they said no. We got to stop sending them all that money, a rich country that doesn't need it, use that money to support the homeless and take care of the people here in this country. That's it.
Thank you. Jordan?
Good to see you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just want to share real quick, a true measure of society and of community and of a city is the way that we treat our most vulnerable people. In 2014, I started interviewing people on the streets in Oceanside. From 2014 to 2025, I've interviewed over 700 people on the streets in Oceanside alone. You can check this out on my website, humanitieshowards.org. In talking to people, they expressed two things, other than housing and services, was the need to be seen and the need to be clean, and so, in trying And so, in trying to respond to that need, we launched a mobile shower unit. It's called Humanity Showers. Since 2019 to 2025, we've been doing showers in Oceanside, sometimes five days a week. Right now, we're only serving Oceanside on Wednesdays. But in the last five years, we've done over 24,000 showers in Oceanside. As a solution that I'm proposing is I'm willing to dedicate one six-stall shower trailer to the city of Oceanside and run it for free. If you just provide us a parking lot, we do it right now. You could check with some of the council members. I don't think we've had any... We haven't had no ambulance or no police show up in the last five years there. We take care of the issues ourselves. We built a community. So, my solution is we'll provide a shower for free for the city of Oceanside and we'll run it for free. I don't see what the barriers are. So, just send me a message and glad that we can start tomorrow. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
All right, so...
Madam Mayor, we had some individuals that signed up on the wrong item that wanted to talk on...
Okay, how many do we have?
I know one gentleman approached myself and Mr. Hashimi as well.
Okay, so go ahead and come and speak. Please provide your name. And then you have up to three minutes.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Evan. There's a stat, I'm sure you guys know it, but I just wanted to share it. In 2013, an article was published in the American Journal of Public Health. The article was called "Homelessness During the Transition from Foster Care to Adulthood." The results of the study were that, reading this verbatim, youth aging out of foster care are at high risk for becoming homeless during the transition to adulthood. Between 31% and 46% of our study participants have been homeless at least once by age 26 years. Running away while in foster care, greater placement instability, being male, having a history of physical abuse, engaging in more delinquent behaviors, and having symptoms of a mental health disorder were associated with an increase in the relative risk of becoming homeless. I remember a few years ago, and I'm sure most of us do, the encampment on Oceanside Boulevard. I made friends with Rodney McGough during that time. He shared his thoughts with me about trauma-informed care, which I've heard people talking about, and his philosophy of a peer support approach, meaning that the people providing that care have experienced homelessness or extreme poverty. And during my time speaking with him and hearing from him, I met another person who was a farmer, or is currently a farmer in San Diego County, North County. And you guys can check this, I'm no expert, but he mentioned that there was some law that was meant to address the shortage of farmers' housing. So, in agriculturally zoned land, you could build structures with greater ease. And he said a little hack was you could just slice the parcels into smaller and smaller portions so you could build more housing. And I know that Rodney's thoughts are that he wants to provide counseling and simultaneously provide skilled job training, preferably in agricultural work. And I want to give a shout out to Jordan and Sonny Soto and everyone here who's doing things to help people and Brother Benno's. And I'm sure I'm forgetting other people, but thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hashimi?
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez, council members and staff. My name is Omar Hashimi and I volunteer frequently at the Oceanside Navigation Center. And one thing that comes up a lot, and I didn't hear about it tonight, is the amount of people that fall into homelessness because they get evicted. And a lot of those people, sometimes they're in their apartment or homes for a long time. And once they get evicted, it's very hard for them to get back in. Number one, their credit gets shot, so there's no way they can apply for a new place. Number two, if they were renting for a long time, now they're looking at market rents and it's impossible for them to afford those rents. So, my question is, is there anything in the plan or in our future plans to help people from, basically preventing people from becoming homeless in the first place? Because it's a lot cheaper to keep them in their homes than to try to pull them out of homelessness once they become homeless. So, are we looking at ways, maybe emergency vouchers or any other type of way to keep people in their current homes? Maybe some more tenant protections or something we could do at the city level? Thank you.
Thank you. And that was part of prevention, right? Yeah. Okay, sir?
My name is James Daniels and I am a resident of Oceanside here for 28 years. And I've worked with a lot of homelesses and a lot of outreach organizations. I think the director, she's headed in the right direction as far as getting units, but we still need more units. And the thing I see out there with the homeless the most is the people who aren't drug addicts, who aren't mentally challenged, people who just had some bad luck. And we need to find a way to get these people housed for two or three months so they can get back to life. You know, California has the highest homeless rate in the United States. And so, when we don't do that, put these people back into society, right? They become drug addicts, right? And they become mentally challenged because we don't have funds for them. But we have funds for the mentally challenged and we have funds for the drug addicts. They have to have a problem to get there, right? So, these people, they have nowhere to go. So, they commit suicide, they rob, they steal, they do all kinds of stuff, right? But we need to focus on that. And she did have a plan, she mentioned homeless prevention services. And she's headed in the right direction. But we need to get focused on those people. Because if we don't focus on those people, then we're doing a speeding system. And if you look at those slides you had up there, I mean, they did a lot of work. But guess what? Those percentages only increased by a couple of percentage. Why? Because we're speeding the system. And you need to get a handle on what the real problem is, not just throwing people in the building. That's not going to solve anything. And the only thing I saw were the vouchers, the tracking part. And when these people call different organizations, I think when homeless people try to call and get them placed and stuff like that, you need to have people who are qualified to deal with homeless people, not another homeless person or answering the phone at an organization, right? Or somebody with a bad attitude who don't know what these homeless people are going through. And last thing, those vouchers, we need to get control on them. Because days like these rainy days, that's when we really need those vouchers. Those people out there in the rain right now, some of them don't have any cover and they're just sleeping out there in the rain. So, we need to get that taken care of. And one more thing I want to say, those parking rides, there's a parking ride over there off a mission that's under that bridge, close to the fire station. I see a bunch of goats out there sometime. And that parking ride could be used for some homeless people to park at. I think those goats are probably there just to eat all the weeds up that are around the parking lot. So, we need to tune that money into, you know, those homeless people. Okay? So, that's my time. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Could you spell your last name? James?
Mr. Daniels. Can you spell your...
Daniel.
Your last name is what?
Daniels.
Oh, Daniels, okay.
And that pretty much clears out the off-agenda speakers list.
Okay, so nobody will...
There was two different ones and...
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless Mr. Burrell, Ms. Kada, and Ms. Rocco want to speak again on off-agenda, those are the only ones that...
Okay, great. All right, so what we're going to do now, we're going to take a 10-minute break. And after which, we will hear from staff, respond to the questions that were raised, and also, I believe, go over the...
Yes, we will go over each of the key recommendation areas.
Key recommendation areas. All right, so back at 7:40. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started again. We're going to first hear from the staff and then we'll go to the council. So, is staff ready? Ms. Hines, are you ready? Oh, okay.
Yeah, sorry. So, thank you, honorable mayor and council members. So, in terms of next step and how we're going to approach this here, so, you know, after getting together after the break, kind of come to the realization there really wasn't a whole lot of questions to be answered directly. But certainly, there are some themes there. With respect to the questions that were asked, really, the primary question that got asked earlier, the only real direct question had to do with our enforcement protocols of encampment. And I understand that our hot team actually did speak to the individual, Mr. Alcola, who was speaking about that specific situation. As it turns out, it sounds like he had actually been contacting a code enforcement officer in making those complaints. And so, we explained to him the protocols. Chief Aldovinos can explain that if the council has an interest in hearing that in more detail in terms of the protocols that we do follow. I understand that Mr. Alcola has left since then, but he was given information in terms of the process that we follow and who he should call in the future if he has the kind of concerns that he explained. I am going to also ask Director Hines to further explain the ERF model, the Encampment Resolution Fund model that was discussed and mentioned during our presentation. Because we understand, although there weren't a lot of questions, there was a lot of common themes by some of the speakers that spoke to the need to make sure that we were providing social services in addition to a typical enforcement approach. And that social service-led model really is what the ERF program is all about. So, I'm going to ask Director Hines to explain that in greater detail. But before she does that, I also want to make it a point of really sharing my sincere gratitude and thanks for all the service providers that we partner with that are here in the audience tonight. Clearly, without the support of your organizations, we wouldn't be making much of an impact at all. It really does start at the grassroots level. And without the cooperation and the tireless support of your organizations, we wouldn't be making a difference at the end of the day. So, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that I thanked all of you. We heard from a number of service providers this evening and really thankful for the services they provide. So, with that, in terms of next steps, again, I'm going to turn it over to Director Hines to talk a little bit more about the ERF approach. Following that, we are going to tackle each of the four subject areas one by one and again, reiterate some of the recommendations that we're making this time and then turn it over to council for further direction for our next steps. So, with that, if I could please turn it over to Leilani.
Sure. So, we talk about the ERF as the model because really, the main focus is reducing homelessness to build pathways into permanent, sustainable housing. And if you do that, if you give a person a choice of living in a home and having a roof over their head, they will come out of the encampment area, be housed safely, stably, receive the services that they need. And then, as a result of that, we can restore public spaces. It's not the public spaces model that is the big goal. The goal is reducing homelessness and therefore the impacts on those areas. And to do that, it is led by a multidisciplinary social service team. The bulk of the money that we are using is utilized on the outreach and on the navigation piece of it. So, when we talk about the different teams, outreach and navigation, those are the big ones. And that's what we're doing, is we have social service agencies that will be going out, social workers, peer support folks, counselors, street medicine, going out into the areas first. They are the first boots on the ground to do an assessment of the area, find out what those short-term needs are, the immediate needs, and start working on those needs because those can be the barriers to the long-term stability. And as we work with each one of those residents that have been identified through the by-name list, then we will have other workers, housing navigators, other social workers, peer support, again, working with that specific resident or client and start working at a plan, a plan towards permanent housing solutions. We will only utilize shelter systems when that's our last resort, just to get people housed. The outreach in terms of hot OPD or law enforcement comes at the very end. They are not involved in the initial outset and outreach and boots in the ground. They're there simply for closure and maintenance of that area and to provide the support to the main folks who are our navigation team and our housing team. This has been the proven model that has worked in many jurisdictions in order to really quickly house folks towards long-term stability. And that's a different way, I think, that all cities and jurisdictions started years back when homelessness, when we really started tackling it, it was through really a PD, a hot model approach. This is almost the reverse where in this model, PD and enforcement plays that support role that is heavily focused on outreach, navigation, and the housing teams. So, I hope that that addresses a lot of the questions, I think, that were, or not questions, but comments that we heard tonight about social services. We understand that social services are absolutely necessary. People will not have or achieve sustainability in housing if they don't have those services. Any questions or comments, or we can move on? And I do have Sophia Hughes here. If I left anything out, Sophia, you're more than welcome to chime in. But if we'll work through the four focus areas that we presented to you tonight and start taking notes about suggestions and comments. We heard a lot from the community here this evening.
Well, Director Hines is teeing that up. Just to be clear again and to repeat the point that was made at the onset of tonight's workshop, tonight, the goal of tonight is not to actually develop the strategic plan. It's essentially to get the council's direction on the pursuit of certain policies and directions. And the details of that plan will be fleshed out in the coming weeks and months and then brought back to council for final consideration.
Exactly. You've heard a lot from the community who provided some public input into areas in which they'd like us to pursue. You heard things about the inflow and homeless prevention. You've heard things about social service-led, being collaborative partners. We'll take those and incorporate them into the action plan. And any suggestions that you would have for us this evening? So, here are some of the first outreach and support services, really strengthening that model. Because as you all know, working with our homeless community begins first with having a trusted relationship. And so, that outreach and support services connection is the first step in the process. And so, we would like to standardize the ERF outreach framework and utilizing that on a go-forward basis. It's a little bit different than our approach has been. And as we progress with the ERF project, the goal is, is that will work really quickly. And you are likely to see results pretty quickly. And if you like what you see, then we would suggest that we continue that type of framework and start implementing that citywide. Again, the by-name list, a very strategic approach where we do identify specific persons that would live or congregate in certain areas and work on them specifically to their specific and varied needs and trying to address them. And then homeless prevention services, you heard a lot about that. Folks that have been entering into homelessness for the first time where the inflow or the inflow into the system has been far greater than the outflow. Eviction issues being at the heart of how folks become homeless. So, we understand and recognize, that was a big theme and component we heard tonight, that there needs to be some work on that. It's not just about those that are currently homeless, but those that are paying 90%, 80% of their income towards just living in a home. So, how can we help those? And that also is a very cost-effective way. It's probably much cheaper to keep someone housed. It's probably much cheaper to keep someone housed than it is once they enter into the homeless system and all the costs that become associated with that. So, those are some of the options that we've laid out. And as we go through this process, again, there will be more listening sessions with members of the public, with our commissions, to hear more. I think tonight, we'd like to hear more from you all as council, if there are some suggestions or areas you'd like us to explore as we develop the plan. That would be our goal tonight from staff.
Okay. Were you going to do each of the pathways to solution or just the outreach and support services?
We can start, we'll go, we'll go through each of the four focus areas. So, just outreach and support services, if there are any comments? I think we heard a lot from the community tonight that we can take with us.
I think you could just go ahead and summarize so that we can start discussing at the dais.
Okay.
Yes.
So, outreach and support services is the outreach models to ensure comprehensive engagement while integrating multidisciplinary service teams. And again, the outreach framework of the ERF, utilizing the by-name list. And then, various homeless prevention services. I've listed a few here, and we've heard some from the community, so if there are any other suggestions at this point in time.
Okay, the next one is...
The next one would be the short term, recognizing that from a housing perspective, we always want permanent housing. But we recognize that there might be a necessary step, and we will need to look at increasing that next step or that in-between step of short-term housing. Under that...
Scaling up to long-term housing inventory.
And then, scaling up to long-term housing. But short-term housing solutions, we've talked about safe parking. You all have already approved a safe parking that we will be launching here at the end of the month. Non-congregate housing is something that I heard from Council Member Figueroa, talked about the homes that were made available through the county. That's also a good model. It can address the needs of families or others who require a little bit more privacy than being grouped altogether. The navigation center, we've been successful at that thus far. There is absolutely an ability there to increase capacity. It's scaled up to that. It's just, how do we look at the navigation center, learn from the operations that we've had over the last year? How could it better address what you're hearing tonight? And then, motel vouchers, again, a program that we've operated a few years back. It can be a successful model. I look at it more personally as a waiting list, a waiting room type of solution. But those are some of the low-barrier shelter programs that we've offered tonight. I think there were some comments from the community. I heard one from the churches about the winter sheltering. That's something that, you know, is not necessarily listed here, but certainly in weather like this evening, something that we could explore, understanding what those barriers are, that we don't have a huge participation level on that. So, that would be something new that's not necessarily listed on this slide.
That's something that we started doing in the early 2000s, but somehow it petered out. So, maybe when you reach out to the faith-based, you can find out why. It was the winter shelter that waived all the CUPs and everything, requirements to be able to do. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sure. And so, then, pathways to permanent housing solutions, really scaling up. We've, I think we've done a great job in these last few years. We talked about, we've got over 600 units coming online in the pipeline over the next three years. But certainly, there's got to be some other alternative, innovative, permanent supportive housing solutions out there. We talked a little bit about shared housing. I think that was brought up by the public, having a room available to rent, rapid rehousing. There may be other models out there that we're not exploring. Some folks do, if independent living, that's another, that's another solution. But any other kind of innovative way, because it does take a lot of money, and it takes a long time to get new construction units up and on the ground. So, I think that's, that's an area in which we would like to explore, is there a faster, cost-effective way to really bringing permanent housing online? And then, looking at the need for supportive housing services. People talk a lot about the Housing First model. When you talk about Housing First, the thing that gets often lost is, it's a Housing First model with the support services.
Wraparound services.
It's got to have the support service. If you're just going to put someone in a house, you've almost set them up for failure. And so, ensuring that we can find a way in which we can engage and have the support services needed. And then, again, we talked about our progress in building new housing. And then, on public health and safety for all, I'm really looking at the public health-focused, something that I picked up on from the audiences, engaging our healthcare plans in this. They do understand the cost to them, and there are programs out there. And other jurisdictions and other counties have been more successful at engaging the healthcare system in this issue. But by providing stable housing, it also costs them a lot of money. So, if you have stable housing, you have a reduction in healthcare costs. Part of our ERF model also incorporates this non-emergency healthcare services, which is basically street medicine. And so, that's something that we would like to see, not only in the ERF area, but something that could be used citywide. And then, prioritizing our most vulnerable, our seniors or disabled that may be in the encampments, and getting them quickly into shelter. Two, the last items here are really, again, as I suggested in when we talked about the ERF model, it's housing-based. And so, all of our resources are dedicated towards moving persons into housing. What it does lack are those resources in making sure that encampments are clean and cleared, and then, how do you monitor and enforce those clear areas? I think I heard a public comment that, or asked about how, what are you going to put up? What are you going to do to make sure people don't re-inhabit the area? That is an area in which we need to explore more, the resources that we would need to take this all the way from housing and keeping the areas clear. That's a little bit of a new ask, open to other suggestions that might be public health-focused, but those were a couple that we heard tonight. And the sustainability of the response system, I think we all heard, it takes the village, it takes all of us, whether it's government, whether it's the county, whether it's our faith-based community, our grassroots organizations. The sustainability of the response system really is tied to all of us coming together with the resources that we have. Some will be limited, some might be bigger than others, but coming together and putting our resources together, our thoughts and heads together, and how do we sustain, how do we address these issues? Our homeless manager, hoping that that homeless manager really takes the reins and takes the lead in the interdepartmental coordination, the alignment of our local programs with the region, working with the region, working with our neighboring cities, and to pursue those leveraging opportunities. I know I heard, and then, funding opportunities, that's always going to be a big one. I think you heard a comment that there was no funds set aside by the state related to homeless programs in this upcoming budget. That's an area in which we need to really pursue and advocate for, whether it's us as a city jurisdiction or whether it's every citizen out here who's represented, is to advocate for more funding for our homeless programs and our housing programs as well. And that was the last of our focus.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Before I get to the council, I just, I want to say that the staff report was really thorough. I really, really enjoyed reading the staff report. It included a lot of the ideas that I had been thinking about and talking to staff all along, and I was really happy to see a variety of recommendations that are being made. And the, basically, the discussion on how these are best practices, these are things that are being done out, other places that are very successful. So, I'm really, really looking forward to this year's effort, really ramping it up. And I feel that staff, all staff are on board with this, our police chief, our fire chief, you know, code enforcement, everybody is really working well together to come, you know, to have come up with this, with these recommendations. I'm going to go ahead and get started with Deputy Mayor Joyce.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, and by the way, because this is a workshop, I'm not really timing you. But we all get to speak, okay?
Deal.
Okay.
Thank you. So, my first, my first thing I want to say is thank you for everybody's here. There are a lot of folks that were here that shared something very personal about their own experience or about their passion for helping folks who are most in need, so I just appreciate you all. And I know Jonathan was, our city manager, was thanking all of the programs that we coordinate with. There's also, I don't think you meant to leave it out, but I just want to make sure it's said, there's so many programs that we don't actually coordinate with that is providing services in our city, and I just want to also make sure that you feel the love that we all have for you and what you do in our city on a day-to-day basis, helping those who are most vulnerable. I love a lot of what we've heard tonight. It sounds like we're moving in a really positive direction. It sounds like we're really starting with human dignity in the response that we're trying to build out. I do ask, is there another way that we can refer, and this is, I know this is a little minute, but we're calling it the ERF kind of framework. I don't want folks to get confused that the ERF is like a separate program. A way that we could refer to the new version of what our outreach looks like, would it be like a continuum of care model or something to that degree? But just that we recognize that those are two separate programs, like that one's funded. And so, when we, when we move forward, I just want to make sure that our strategic plan is not referencing ERF because it's, because, I think you got me on that one. Okay. So, the other couple of things that I just want to talk, and we have the, can we bring back, is this the first? Can we put it, the slide back on the first set of recommendations? Because I think that's the ones that I have notes on to start.
Right. And the recommendations are on the first page of the staff report. That includes all the pathways to solutions that have been outlined. Is that correct, Ms. Hines?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. So, under outreach and support, there are three called out on the slide, standardizing ERF outreach framework citywide. So, that would be moving to a social service model citywide. Thank you so much for including it. It's, I think that's going to be a huge shift in the way that we serve folks that are living without, without shelter right now. I'm fully supportive, and I'm really excited to see what that looks like. I know that's going to take time to build out that model, and so, I look forward to seeing that. I assume that when it comes back, that will be more spelled out on how we transition from where we're at now to what that looks like.
Deputy Mayor Joyce, I can answer that question, yes. That would be the goal. And then, keep in mind, as I also mentioned during the opening comments, we do plan on doing a check-in with council around June. We also need to, of course, cost out each of these items that we're going to be discussing as well because that's an important consideration as well. And, you know, so I just want to make sure that that point is clear because obviously there are costs associated with everything that we're talking about it, but at this point, we certainly support the approach that we're talking about here.
Okay. And then, I did have one adjustment to this outreach and support services. My request would be that, and I'm seeking for council support, the homeless prevention services or everything that basically stops the flow of individuals for people who are at risk of becoming homeless to going into becoming homeless. I think we heard a ton about that tonight. We talked about how important it is not only to save money, but it's also the most humane thing to do for people because we're, we're recognizing that before they get into homelessness, we can actually prevent a lot of the trauma that is experienced by living on the street. So, I would really ask that our, that we remove that and make that its own focus. So, that would be housing stability or prevention as a separate focus because I think there is a lot of work to be done in there, and maybe it's not always typically associated with a homeless's strategic plan, but this is like, I think holistically, looking at that as its own focal point is really important. So, I guess I would, I'll have one more thing, and then, I would just ask that if the council supports that, that'll be in the motion. The third one I had was, I had a question about our current shelter right now. What does the, what is the status of our agreement with the rescue mission?
So, sure. The agreement is on a one-year extension. The city council approved that extension in last November. It'll be up again in the next November or this coming November. We, at that time, we had told you that we were trying to separate those agreements, one for the use of property and then with the operations. We have not come back with the operations piece of it. The current agreement covers both still, so it's still in effect. We would need to reconsider that soon because November is that date. I think what you heard tonight was a lot about the differing needs. I think we're probably in a different place than when we started the navigation center and that discussion. That discussion, I think, occurred before I got here in 2020.
Me too.
And one of the things that we talk about is this landscape changes drastically from year to year, depending upon how the economy is, depending upon the politics. And so, a plan that might have been put in place in 2019, 2020, now we're here at 2025. We've heard some changes. The females are a good portion. We've heard about seniors are a good portion. It's probably time for us to not only look at the expansion of it, but how does, how does the operations today meet the needs that we have today, not from 2020? So, I think we would recommend that we re-look at that. Re-look at that completely to make sure that we've learned and that we're adjusting and addressing the needs for today.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, based on that and the feedback that we heard and that we've been hearing about availability and data and the model, and maybe even just the mission alignment and the changes in what we, what we're trying to do now, so I would like to include the council's blessing to go out for a public RFP on, on the operations of the shelter. And so, I'll make the motion to accept the standardized ERF model, the by-name list approach, to move the prevention services to its own focal point, and then, to add the RFP to the, to the recommendations.
I'll second that. So, it is the recommendations on the first page plus a separate listing for prevention, which that was something that I was going to push as well, so I'm happy you brought that up. And I do agree that things have changed, so that RFP are, is necessary. So, anyone else wishing to speak?
For the, for the prevention, I think, I think, yeah. One, the, you know, I want to say thank you to staff for making such a very comprehensive report. I know how much time that took to put all of this together and to take, you know, everything that had, that you know that you've been hearing, seeing, working with our providers, our community, council. It was, just thank you for working hard on putting this together. The by-name list is very important. It humanizes our houseless community. One of the things that, to me, was so critical about this component is making sure that we're not moving people just from one part of Oceanside to another part or moving them to Vista. to Vista, and then Vista responds, and they move to Carlsbad, Carlsbad responds, and they move to Oceanside, and we just keep doing this, musical chairs, you know, every other year. And the collaboration that was put under the reduced, the public health and safety impacts of homelessness with our bordering cities of Vista and Carlsbad, I think is so critical. And I think that just to expand on that work plan, I think is going to be very important, and to make sure that our city managers in our neighboring cities and their staff are aligned, because I think that is one way that we move the needle regionally within our community. And we know that our houseless community travels up and down Hacienda Boulevard, between Vista and Oceanside, but also down Vista Way, El Camino Real, and, you know, throughout the city as well. But that is just so critical, so thank you. And I think that that needs to be expanded upon. With the prevention, I think it's critical that we look at also preserving our affordable housing, and then look at rental protections for tenants, similar to what Chula Vista and San Diego, the city of San Diego and Chula Vista have done. When I used to run the homeless shelter at Operation Hope North County, the majority of the folks that came to the shelter were there because they can no longer afford to live where they were staying, or they were evicted, or something happened. And as many mentioned today, it is very hard to get them back into housing once they have become homeless. And so the more that we can do to be preventative, to keep our families, our seniors, our working community from becoming houseless, the more that we can continue to focus on upstream work, which at sometimes it's not what is so, you know, it doesn't make a big splash. But at the same time, it's how we prevent folks in our community from becoming homeless. And it's only getting more and more expensive to live here in Oceanside. So when I think about prevention, those are things that I hope that we are looking into and considering and seeing what those. I named San Diego and Chula Vista because they are the other two largest cities in San Diego County, and they have put some tenant protection and as well as preserve, they're looking to preserve their affordable housing.
Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you. I'll try and run through these quickly, because they're not all about the ERF thing. But I do have one question on the metrics, reportable metrics. How will we know that we're being successful? What kind of, has that been worked out yet?
I'm going to hand it over to Cynthia, who's handling the project.
Yeah, I can answer that. So we do have set metrics from the state, as well as set reporting deadlines that are quarterly. We have, I'm not sure if it made it into the staff report, but we do have a table that shows what our milestones are. After the first six months, I think it's having 25% of encampment residents served. And it just goes on kind of month by month, that what percentage should be housed and served by those dates. And then we're also, as Sal mentioned earlier, all of our service providers are entering their data into HMIS. And so it falls to us as the managing partner to be reviewing that data as it comes in to make sure that we are hitting our targets and actually moving people straight from encampments into housing as promised to the state.
But I think what I'm hearing is that if we're putting together an accountability report or performance report, that that would be something that council would like to see.
Essential, yeah.
And Honorable Mayor and council members, if I could also, and we can certainly share the metrics that are associated with that grant with council following this workshop, so you have a clear understanding of the metrics that we're being held to.
Perfect. Thank you. Couple of, well, I've got about five other things, and I'll try and go through them quickly. I think one thing we've definitely seen in the staff report, and I do agree with the mayor, that it was a thorough report, that we do invest a lot of money into programs. And if you look at the dollars spent for the number of people that we're currently serving, we put a lot of money into people. Now, there's always room to do more. I get it. And I do think that this has now, originally it was all about trying to serve just the Oceanside resident homeless. And now it is truly, I think, proven tonight to hear that it is a regional issue, and it requires a regional approach, you know, to, for different needs and different metrics. I'm not sure that we needed really an RFP. I think our current provider up there could meet that, but I can see where it's going, so I'll just let it go, because there's nothing I'm going to do about it. That said, I think there is a need, and I don't know how we capture it going forward, but we have to remember that there are, the other part of this is the citizens that pay their taxes, have their homes, mind their own business, and then the impacts that they are getting from the homeless. And not all homeless are mischievous or do bad things, but we all get the emails, we all see them, we saw by the number of responses that our law enforcement goes on and our fire department goes on, that there are a lot of things out there that impact our citizens who also we need to worry about and help find ways to protect them and respond to them. In area of response, and I don't know if there's something that can be done, or we have it now, but, because I experienced this myself with trying to help a homeless person, and even I didn't know how to help them get past what their immediate need was, which was to get them to a place. She wanted to go to Walmart, she needed some money. I could do all that. I could put her in my truck, take her to Walmart, give her some money so she could get some clean clothes, those kind of things. But the time of day it was and the day of the week it was, we need some sort of rapid response team or a number that you can call, and you know you're going to get, thanks, I don't get that very often. A number that we can call or an individual in the city that's working that you can call and say, hey, I need help with this person, and you know they're going to come out. And that's not a knock on our hot team, it's not a knock on our cops. They got many other things to do, but I just don't think that we have that. And maybe I'm mistaken. Like somebody tonight said, they came across a lady that's sleeping out in the rain. Well, if I walked out there right now and said, hey, would you like some shelter? Would you like to go? Can I get her into a hotel room tonight, like that? Can I?
No.
See, that's what I'm talking about. We need to be able to address those one-offs. So put it in your notes for later. I want to talk a little bit about the camp cleanup processes, and this is something that I came across the other day with our OPD camp team that was out there behind Fireside Park, Real Deal. And we're sitting there talking, and they're telling me there's four big camps getting cleaned up. And I said, how long you think they'll be there? And I could see this guy out there swinging a hammer or axe or something and trying to, he says, oh, all week. And about 10 minutes later, I see this, I don't know, it was an F-150, looked like my kind of truck, F-150, and it's going down this dirt road, leaving with one of the elephants that you talked about, you know, in the back. It's full of stuff. And I thought it was one of the homeless guys that had a truck that was leaving. And he goes, no, that's the cleanup crew. And I'm like, wait a minute, no wonder it's going to take a week if our cleanup crews are operating with that kind of equipment. And I talked to the officers, and I said, is this how they do it all the time? And he said, yeah. And I asked him, I said, what do you think they need? And he goes, they need a compaction truck, they need to be able to use mechanized equipment. We could knock that out in a day, probably two days at most. But if you got hand crews out there trying to do it all by hand and loading F-150s, cleaning encampments take forever. And I just would say, as we look forward to letting contracts for our cleanup crew, not a knock on the crews that are doing it, they're out there every day, but we got to be able to do it faster, and we have to be able to do it cleaner. And I think there's ways of doing that. So that's just for your notes. We talked about expansion of existing services. I think you mentioned our 50 beds and going to 75 or whatever it is. And so just as a city, we need to really look at, we look at our strategic plan as how do we take what we have now and expand it? And we do have room, we can do it, but we're just going to have to have a plan for doing Let's see, what else did I have for you? And I don't, it didn't get talked about, but, you know, everybody talks about what the, but we have those that continually refuse service. There are, I'm sure, the folks on the hot team can give you their names and tell you who they are. You know, they go out, maybe they get their encampment cleaned up, taken away from whatever, but they don't want service. We have to have a solution to these individuals that continually refuse service, because if you don't want help, if you don't want to get out of the riverbed, if you, and believe me, they're in the riverbed, and the gatekeepers who we have, I love downtown, it's clean, it's great, it's all that, but I can tell you where they've gone to. They're all in District Two, right down the river. They just had to come out to Oceanside Muni Golf Course the other night at 3:00 in the morning, because they were setting up camps behind, I don't know why they picked behind my neighbor's house, but that was okay. You know, they had to come out and move them, because they were disturbing the peace, hammering boards together, or whatever they were doing. So we're just moving them from downtown out deeper into the valley, and we need to be conscious of where they're at. But again, refusal of service, we have to somehow in our strategic plan come up with a solution for what we're going to do about that. And also, I wanted to mention on the cleanup too, and I talked to the city attorney about this, is that we have a section of the city code that allows us in, if it's, give me the right word, a nuisance or hazard or?
Immediate threat to health and safety.
Thank you. See, I knew he'd give me it. Immediate health. So when they're out in the riverbed, and it's a dry season, and they're cooking out there, they got open flame devices, we should not have to give them that 24-hour notice. We should be able to, because they are putting people at risk. That's what people are worried about. And I just think somehow incorporate our city code, what it allows us to do with the plan, so everybody knows, so our officers know, our code enforcement people know, our fire department knows. So that's just some things for you to consider. And thank you, Mayor, for that much time, and I will yield back, as they say.
Thank you. Mr. Burke?
Just to clarify, on the immediate threat to health and safety, that is built into the code as it presently exists, but it's not necessarily carte blanche to remove an entire encampment or facility. If it's a fire risk, it's removing the fire implement, right? So we've got to be a little careful in what that language means, but we do have additional tools under the ordinance, as it does exist. But as you've heard already from staff, the policy is not to, you know, act in an inhumane way or act, you know, immediately. But we do have, again, high fire risk, high wind, high red flag. Okay, we can talk about if there's an immediate health and safety risk from a fire implement in that situation, but it's not just a, across the board, every encampment would meet that definition.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Weiss?
Thank you. I just want to thank staff for the effort and everything you put into this tonight. And I actually look forward to getting updates on where you are in developing the strategic plan. So I want to clarify, is your motion, just with those minor additions, all for?
No, just for the first.
Just for the first one?
Yeah.
Okay. So I would ask that we bifurcate the motion with the homeless shelter from the strategic plan.
Is that all your comments? Okay. All right. Well, again, I'm very, very excited. I was really looking forward to this workshop and to challenging staff to think outside of the box, and they have. And I'm very, very excited that we, in fact, are already starting to learn from the ERF model. So we are getting, you know, informed by that, best practices. The MCRT, the mobile crisis response teams, is something that I'm very excited about, that the city of San Diego started off with, I think it was two or three, and now they're up to, I can't remember, several of those. And they have replaced law enforcement. So, and it's more effective, less costly, and we do need to get our cops back on the street. So I'm very excited about that model as well. Again, I talked to the chief, Chief Valdivinos, and he indicated that, yes, they definitely work with the MCRT units, that they actually go all around the county. But that's, that is a model that is being used throughout the country, which is substituting professionals, is for the police. And again, it's just been extremely successful in other places, and they emphasize costing less. So very excited about that. I want to emphasize that we're prioritizing services, shelters, housing to Oceanside residents. I really want to emphasize that, and that family unification is very critical to this as well. And I would like to set a goal. Say we have 600 homeless, just accept something, 600. I would like to set a goal of three years to reduce our homeless by half. That's a challenge, but I understand that we are capable of doing 100 a year. That's what I'm hoping that we will fix, on getting 100 folks out of homelessness each year for three years. But that three year, I think that's a good, that's a good time to come back and, after evaluating everything and giving us the numbers, come back with a presentation. The other thing that I think that we could have under short-term housing, excuse me, scaling up to long-term housing inventory, I believe we need to start, we need to look at opportunities to buy, to invest in land. We need to have a place to have tiny homes or, and this could be, these could be temporary places, and then we can, you know, ramp it up to like housing. I guess depending on what kind of tiny house, tiny homes project we end up looking at. But I understand that we might be able to have a tiny home program even right next to the shelter, which would finally get us, I'm going to finish, then I'll get to you.
That's fine. Just, you know, I have others for the other things. I was just for the first strategic goal that I was speaking to.
Okay. Well, let me finish, and then I'll get to you. Okay. Because I imagine that you're going to be doing a motion for each one of these. Right? Okay. So, but I really, really feel that we need to be doing that. We did that before, and then for some reason, we stopped investing, and I think we got behind when we stopped doing that. This is how we were able to do Mission Cove, La Misión, I mean, several, you know, several projects. And it's something that I feel that we really, really need to do. And, let's see if there's anything else I wanted to say at this point. Well, the question I had is, I heard the timeline that you're looking at. I was wondering if we could in any way move any of those times up.
In terms of development of the action plan?
Yeah, yeah. Because, I mean, I'm just, I know the people are going to see this as, okay, we had this workshop, and then they're going to wait several months before we adopt something. And I just wonder, realistically, is there any way that we can do some of this faster than others?
Honorable Mayor and council members, I think I can address that. Certainly, I think there's some things that have been discussed tonight that we can start moving immediately on. As I mentioned, it was our intent to provide regular updates to the city council in terms of the progress that we're making. So I think at least, at a minimum, being able to work on some low-hanging fruit that, you know, we may be able to all agree on tonight, coupled with regular updates to council, might get us there. At the end of the day, I'm not sure if we can deliver the strategic plan any sooner. Certainly, you know, we have our homeless services manager that we're bringing on board, want to tap her expertise as well. So, you know, I would just be a little bit cautious to overpromising in terms of the delivery, but certainly we'll try and do things as quickly as we can.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Deputy Mayor Joyce, Councilmember Robinson, can we vote on the first one and then go on to the next one?
Yes.
Yeah? Okay. Let's vote on the first.
And are we bifurcating the vote as well?
And are we bifurcating the vote as well?
Uh, with respect to?
Separating the strategic plan and the RFP.
Oh, the shelter. Okay, yeah, sure. So first vote is on the motion minus the, um, the shelter, right? Yeah. Please vote.
Motion approved, five zero.
Okay. Second vote is on the shelter and doing the RFP. Please vote.
Motion approved, three two. Robinson, Weiss, no.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, and sorry for interrupting. I just, you're, you're talking about some things that are really important, and they're in that second one, that's, I apologize. So the second, uh, the second class of things we talked about is diversifying.
Pathways to solutions, yeah.
Diversifying ha, um, housing, and that's short and long term. And so, uh, the mayor brought up, uh, possibly purchasing land, and so I think adding that is one of our possibilities is a great idea. Alongside that is getting a list of the land that we already own, um, especially ones that are not being operated in any form or fashion right now. So I know we have places that are underutilized, like our French Fields property and some other properties, and I just think it's really important that that gets put into this mixture of, of ways that we can make sure our land is utilized appropriately. So hopefully my colleagues support that. When it comes to, uh, when it comes to tiny homes, I had a question. I think this goes alongside with using, uh, housing vouchers. There's been, uh, at least in some of my contact with folks that are providers, there's, there's a lot more uptake on, on motel vouchers versus taking into a congregant setting. And, you know, one, we can imagine why, right? You're, you have a choice to go into a motel room, which is private, which has your own private bathroom, and all of the things that go with that, versus going into, um, a shelter where you're sharing space. And so, um, is the goal, are we thinking that the tiny homes would be, um, specific to certain populations in the, in the planning, or is that kind of to be determined?
Like families?
Yeah, I think that's to be determined, obviously, with the need that we've discussed about families, females, um, balancing with children, really in need of much more congregant setting, seniors sometimes. So when you think of that population group, that vulnerability, we would, my personal opinion is we would want to target those for the tiny home model.
Okay. And then?
Congregate housing, non-congreg.
Around the, uh, long-term housing inventory, I don't think I heard Project Home Key brought up in the presentation. Could you explain to the council and the public a little bit about Project Home Key and what that is?
Sure. Sorry. Project Home Key is a funding source, and then actually there is a funding source, there is a NOFA out right now. We have heard from a few developers related to possible properties that are on the market that could turn over. So Project Home Key is one in which started with acquisition of hotels or motels, turning them into housing for those that are unsheltered or in need of housing. Um, it is a model that is also tied to supportive services. Some of the issues, um, that we have learned through the years on Project Home Key can be, one, it's challenging to buy a hotel motel, sometimes the costs aren't as easy as you think. They really are units, they are hotels. They were never built or constructed to be long-term permanent housing, so sometimes there are issues, just like in all ACT rehab, you open up the walls and you have something new.
Asbestos.
And then the bigger issue with Project Home Key is that is, in all affordable housing, we require that affordable housing have a covenant for 55 years. Uh, Project Home Key or some of our permanent supportive housing sources don't provide that supportive housing or, or services for 55 years. It might be for a five or a 10-year span. And so at that end of that junction, you're on the hook for, how do I continue to pay for those support services? A little bit of kicking that can down the road, we'll worry about it when we reach year five, when we reach year 10. But it certainly is an option. We have been approached by developers, um, on a couple of properties, so it is something that I think in terms of the action plan would be there. Uh, as City Manager Borrego discussed, um, in terms of the timeline, we're not waiting for September to start moving on some of these actions that you're directing now. Uh, Project Home Key has a deadline, I think, in January, so if that's something that we're hearing, is something we want to pursue, we're not waiting for September to pursue that, we'll pursue it now. Um, we'll start analyzing some of these housing preservation things now, not necessarily once you lay down the gavel and three of you at least support the action plan. Um, but we are, we are working now to address these issues.
Okay. Are there, are there ways that we can streamline, uh, 100% affordable projects? And maybe that's a, a question for planning. But are there ways that we can support it with, within the city as far as getting those projects, uh, built faster, I guess? I know we can't control them getting funding from the state, and I, I'm assuming that's one of the barriers, but.
I'm just going to take a personal point of privilege in this, in, in terms of, I think our development services staff has done an excellent job. For example, the El Camino Real project had a very tight timeframe, um, and staff has met that challenge. And as long as we always have cooperative give-and-take partners, our, our staff has been amazing at getting that done, and they're going to meet their deadlines because of the extra effort that our DSD staff has put into it. Um, so they've found a way to make it work, whether it's the, working through the processes or just dedicating their time and effort. There has not been one project that we've seen come forward, whether it's Greenbrier or El Camino Real, in which staffing and our processes has been the barrier to getting a project done and meeting the timeline.
Awesome. Thank you. There is another model that, I don't know that there's another one that's happened, that's here in San Diego, but it is, um, I know it is an oversea, it's used a lot of overseas, and that's a limited profit housing corporation. And so that's looking at, um, groups that are willing to limit their upside on building housing, which ends up costing, I mean, that's one of the reasons it costs so much to even build affordable housing, is because that it is profitable as an industry. And so, uh, however we can take that on as a city, I think we should at least be open to maybe, uh, taking a pathway that, that supports that. So if that could be added to the things to explore, there's a lot of exploring going on in this, in this space. Uh, also Community Housing Trust. And then, um, is there, is there any municipalities, and I apologize for putting you on the spot like this, I should have asked this one in advance, but, uh, that, that have a fee or something associated with corporately purchased, single-family homes? Is there, is there a way that you can, because we know they're taking that off the market for individuals that are trying to seek housing stock, and that seems like a space that would, we could put that money back into housing their locals. Do you know of any programs that do that? I'm sorry, I don't know, this is so out of left field.
No, I don't. It, it has been an area that has been explored, if y'all remember the Conrad Prebeys, um, foundation, when they sold off a lot of theirs and Blackstone, uh, Blackstone Properties as well, and acquisitions. So there was a lot of talk, I'm not sure what in terms of substantial, uh, programs and efforts were made to address those types of issues. So that'd be something that we'd have to look into.
To check into. Okay. I think within the housing, um, then, then that's all the questions or suggestions I have. Thank you.
So is your motion to, uh, uh, move forward on the second pathway to solutions, which is short-term housing-focused solutions, scaling up to long-term housing inventory?
Uh, yes, to include the other items that were added.
Like what?
So, um, to be open to hearing, uh, tiny home, looking into tiny homes as a, another way to address sheltering needs, the purchasing, sorry, that is in there.
Yeah.
Purchasing of, of land, uh, being one of our strategic, uh, choices, the inventory of our current buildings and land that we currently own, um, possibly looking at corporately purchased homes.
Yeah, I would not want to go into that.
Okay.
In light of some of the issues we've had with that.
With the corporately purchased homes?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, uh, also adding Community Housing Trust to one of the models that we are exploring.
Okay. So I'll second that. Is there any comments? Let's vote.
Motion approved, five zero.
Your next one? Has to do with public health and safety impacts.
So for number three, I was, I, I didn't have a whole lot to add.
Okay. I didn't have a whole lot to add. I did, the only thing I wanted to bring up was that, uh, we do have environmentally sensitive areas that are, that have big impacts, and as, uh, Councilmember Robbins was bringing up, as folks are pushed out of the more developed downtown area, they're going into the more undeveloped and a lot of times the environmentally safe, um, environmentally sensitive areas. So the San Luis Rey River and the river mouth specifically is a space that I know, um, is very concerning with the amount of trash. Uh, and I, you know, I think that's a, a resource that our city is underutilizing as like a beautiful place just for people to be. And so just talking about, uh, finding a way to come up with plans that are specific to areas like that, that I know are multi-jurisdictional, um, and finding a way to address and, and serve the people, the people that are in those spaces. So that's the only thing I wanted to add, to add on to them.
I'll second that. Any other comments? Under public health and safety impacts. Seeing none, let's vote.
Motion approved, five zero.
Sustainability of the homeless response system by improving regional collaboration, lining with best practices, and pursuing additional funding opportunities.
So for this one, um, I, I love that we're coming up with a plan. I think that is a very city thing to do. Uh, and I know that this, this whole thing is about building out a system. So I, for me, a system that works is one that's checked in on regularly and that we have all the stakeholders at the table. So what I would really like to see is what kind of ongoing system is our new individual going to keep up? Are they going to be doing monthly meetings with all of our providers at the table? I frankly think anyone that's getting any, um, of our contracted support, and I think all the grassroots organizations should be invited as well, but especially if you're utilizing any resources that we're directing, you should have somebody with some kind of decision-making power coming to the table and talking about what you're seeing, what you need, and how you can collaborate better with the other providers. I think, you know, some of them do really great work, and they're doing awesome work in these silos, as we heard talked about, so I would really like to see that system formalized, and then, uh, in some way, some, some of that comes back to us, but I think most importantly is the providers being at the table, so.
Would that be the homeless coordinator?
I mean, hiring the court, would the coordinator coordinate that? Yes, yes, definitely, but, but wanting to know, like, I, that system of constant checking up and resourcing is something that I think is important.
Okay. Councilmember Figueroa?
Yeah, just, uh, to clarify on that, is that separate from Oceanside Vista and Carlsbad working together? This is everyone that's receiving any type of resources or utilizing city resources within the city. So, for example, you're talking about Navigation Center, Safe Parking Lot Program, Outreach workers that we're contracting out, so, and it's also including those that will be working on, um, on the separate project along the 78 as well? Or is it, like, when you say bringing everyone together, who specifically, like, who would that mean?
Yeah. So I think anyone that is, is, any of the organizations that are, that are actually implementing the services that we are coordinating, so that would be the Navigation Center, like you brought up, that would be, um, Interfaith and the work that they're doing on, uh, vouchers or outreach. I would want, I would want to absolutely make sure that all of our partners, like Brother Benno's and anyone that we're not providing funding to, is also invited, because coordinating their, their work is really important too, because they're filling gaps, and if we're not hearing from them about all that they're doing and what, what they need, we are going to end up losing, uh, vital services that are in our, in our city. So, I mean, we also was brought through the executive director of, um, Operation Hope, who operates in Vista but serves Oceanside residents. I want all of them invited to that table, monthly or bimonthly, to make sure that we have, um, we have good information, and it's not one-off silos. I worry that we put all this work on one individual. That's, that's the thing I, I worry about almost more than anything, is like, that one person, and she sounds like she's going to be great, but if she leaves to go be president of some other organization, then I don't want to lose everything. I want our system to be something that is set up to sustain, and, and I think that system needs to be a hard structure of, of, of requirements of meetings and, and conversations, so.
From, from a practitioner standpoint, being that person representing a shelter at one point or another, I think sometimes what you end up seeing within the providers is, um, the turnover amongst the nonprofits. And so when something is not set in place, little by little, some of the providers, because of the turnover, they stop participating in those meetings that take place. So if it is the city saying, no, this is something that we are, um, requiring from those that we are working with, we're providing resources to, but also opening it up to organizations like Brother Benno's and other providers, I think, again, it, we, that is a collaborative approach to continue to move the needle, and it should lead to us being more effective and efficient.
How often, Jimmy, is optimum? Is it once a month, or once every other month?
There's existing groups that meet already, so the Alliance for Regional Solutions Shelter Network meets once a month, the CEOs meet, I believe, every other month. You have, uh, I think HMIS, um, if it's Regional Task Force on Homelessness, you have other case managers that are part of that, and it's a different group, but again, there's turnover amongst the nonprofit staff. So I think if you bring in either leadership, where it's more secure staff that are coming to the table, you are able to be more effective. Um, a lot of the nonprofits are already talking, but at times what's missing in those conversations is either the county or the cities that they operate in are not in those discussions. But if we concentrate it just within the city of Oceanside, it's very, it's manageable.
Right. Okay, so, um, oh, Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you. I think the discussion you just had just really proved that it is a regional issue, so thank you for that. But I, I don't know that, to make a motion, I think what I think you're leaning toward here, I would just advise, let's give staff direction, let's give our new director or, or coordinator a chance to come in. We've got plenty of time to tweak with it and mess with it, and let's hear what she has to say and how to bring these things together. I, it always bothers me as a staff, just from a previous staff position, when council would want to tweak with, you know, before I had a chance to put something together for you and say, hey, this is a way to do it, I don't know what the city manager's opinion is, but, um, I would, uh...
Well, I mean, that's what we're here for, to give direction.
Well, and we can, okay.
But they are going to come back with?
Okay.
Yes, and, and I would say that I think we heard from the public tonight, what we've listed here is interdepartmental coordination, so coordinating amongst ourselves, right? Coordinating with our neighboring cities, meaning I'm going to coordinate with the staff at Carlsbad. I do see here in this list that there isn't a discussion point around the grassroots organizations, the providers, in our meetings related to the ERF, and when we did talk with providers, they did make mention of that, that there are some systems already in place that they do find, uh, that there's benefit to. So we're perfectly accepting of having collaborate with our social service providers.
I guess what, Mayor, what I was trying to say as the deputy mayor was very detailed on who and how and when, and I, I think just the direction to put it together and then let her come back.
Yeah. I, again, the, the only reason, the only reason I'm being specific is because, and I actually want to take a quick second, give Sal a shout-out because of all the work that he does, and we just really appreciate you so much. Um, I know that we've, you had a couple of shouts tonight, but you deserve a big but you deserve a big shout out from all of us. Thank you so much. And I bring you up because you've been coordinating with lots of folks. But what I'm asking for is not just coordinating, it is a formal system of required collaboration. And I think that's what's sustainable. So in my opinion, I think that's a little bit different. But, but of course, this is going to come back. And I would just, I guess I'll be looking for that more than anything.
All right. So that's your motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'm seconding your motion. So any other discussion? Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Right, now, did we already vote on prevention? Okay, so, okay, this is the separate bullet point here. Prevention. Go ahead. Councilmember Figueroa? There was one added, prevention?
Yeah, I would, I would like to discuss forming an ad hoc committee for us to work on the prevention and to look at different tenant protections that we can look into for the city of Oceanside specifically, and also for the prevention, including how we can take a look at the inventory of our current affordable housing and what can we put in place to preserve our current affordable housing. And so if it's possible to create an ad hoc committee with the council and staff.
So you don't want to wait to hear what they come back with on prevention?
I would like to work with the staff on that.
Would you like to? So you get four hours of staff, and then after that, you get more access to staff by asking for more time? Would you like to do it that way?
That works.
Okay, so 10, 15 hours altogether?
Yeah, that should be fine.
Okay, I guess I have a question. Does that need to be brought up separately?
No, the ad hoc committee, I would have advised to bring back in a separate meeting as an agenda. But, but simply waiving the council policy for, you know, additional staff time for Councilmember Figueroa to work with staff on this particular item, it does not need to be separately genized.
Okay.
Can I volunteer?
But you do want to move the prevention item. Is there anything, and, and also that at this time, we're providing Councilmember Figueroa with more, with additional time?
I'd like to volunteer to do that work as well with him.
I think we're all going to be doing that.
Well.
But do you want to do it as a couple?
Yeah, sure.
As two people? Because I'll be doing it by myself as well.
So at this point, we are kind of talking about essentially creating an ad hoc committee with two councilmembers to direct us.
That would be just separate.
You know, if we're going to.
I think if we just say that, I, I want to be mindful to staff because they've got a big job to do. If you need more time to meet with staff, and, and I think that that's something, this is a big project that we're doing. And I think we're going to want access to, to staff, but we're going to be mindful about it, right? Yeah, I, I don't think we need an ad hoc if we have staff really doing this. Usually you have an ad hoc to come up with some other things that I think you're already giving that direction.
So the only reason that I would support an ad hoc, and we can, if we need to bring it back to the next one, is because I'd like to bring back, this is more of like in the policy realm, a list of policies that would support protections that would go under the stabilizing housing for folks who are vulnerable.
I, I think we should give staff a chance with your input, with everyone's input. Mr. Borrego, do you have any thoughts on this?
Honorable Mayor and council members, with all due respect to the, to the council members discussing this item, I would be concerned that the formation of an ad hoc committee or even setting aside time specific for staff to work directly with council is just going to slow things up considerably. With, with all due respect, we do have limited resources, and we have a lot on our plate already. And so the idea of spending additional staff time dedicated to one specific area, without a doubt in my mind, would slow things up considerably. So I would just offer that.
Deputy Mayor Joyce?
Well, if we can't do an ad hoc now anyway, then I guess we'll, we can wait. I don't want to wait until September to start putting in ordinances that we can actually protect people with two months from now. Like we could do, I just don't, I don't see the need to wait for that.
I think that's a separate council item, I would say. If you want to do something.
Yeah, no, I think the, the goal is, as we, everything we discussed this evening, and we continue to hear about folks becoming unhoused, it's how do we continue to move the needle? I know you mentioned there, is there anything that we can do sooner? I think some of, some of these things, I feel that we can do sooner because they're ordinances or policies to protect our current renters in the city of Oceanside and those that are barely making ends meet, our families, our seniors. And so for me, the way that I saw it, and City Manager Borrego, thank you, I really appreciate you saying, because the intent's not to slow the work down. I was thinking of maybe that can, this can be something that would help. You would have more people meeting together, and, and we can move this forward. But I don't want to slow the work down. I want to be able to, if these are.
I think there's a whole lot that we're, we're giving, like the RFP.
So I think my intent of the ad hoc was they would essentially get assistance in, in this from at least myself and another council member. But the goal is not to slow down, not to slow this down. The goal is to help prevent more folks becoming homeless.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
But I will, if, if, again, you know, leaning on what the city manager just expressed, I don't, that's not the goal, so.
Honorable Mayor and council members, if I could add one additional thing too. And keep in mind, in the weeks ahead, we are going to be receiving additional public comment and input as we develop the strategic plans. So if there are thoughts or ideas out there that individuals have, you know, certainly we can take them into consideration and bring that information back as we begin to formulate the recommendations, which we will be, again, sharing with you. You know, formal check-in sometime in June. Certainly, we're going to be doing work in advance of that. And so again, if there are ideas, thoughts, concepts that anyone wants to share with staff during that process, then we're certainly open to those discussions and that information.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Weiss?
I was just going to say, if you have ideas, the two of you together, just give them to Jonathan and tell him to include it in the evaluation.
Deputy Mayor Joyce, are you ready to?
Yeah, I just have one more statement on this because I, because this obsesses my mind, I'm not going to lie. And the reason is, the one thing that I saw from the report that really just, we heard it brought up by many public comments, we served more people last year, and yet we're still seeing it grow. And that's not because people aren't getting the service when we go out to serve them, it's because more people are going in to homelessness. And so this preservation is key. And it's key to getting it done extremely fast. So I, I promise that I'll work on it. And I understand staff is going to be maxed out. They've already done some work on, on tenant protections previously. We even have a staff report. So to the extent that we can bring some of that back to the council for consideration to protect people from getting out of housing and into homelessness, I promise to do so. So I'll move, I'll move the, the new area of focus, Area 5, on housing stability and preservation of current affordable housing.
Okay, I'll second that. Any other comments? Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you very much. I understand we do, we do not have any comments on.
Mr. Burrell has changed his mind, and he wishes to speak on off-agenda comments.
Mr. Burrell? Understand that you're standing between some folks who haven't had dinner yet. Three minutes.
Mr. Burrell, Oceanside. Ready?
Or lunch. Go ahead.
Thank you again for the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to mention something that's related to all of this. And that is apparently mobile home parks are excluded for provisions that are set up to protect affordable housing. And this needs to be looked at. We've lost, I think, at least three mobile home parks here, and the others are at risk. So to be clear about it, when they close, there's no provision where they go, and there's nothing to protect them from being sold out from under them. So this is something I think the city needs to get engaged with, at state level. And I just wanted to put that out there. One last thing is related to what we were talking about tonight. There are a number of organizations, I happen to belong to probably four or five of them. And that, just to give you an example, NAACP, League of Women Voters, ARB, all have committees, and their subject area is the homeless. The point is, you have a pool of resource here that's not tapped into, and it should be, in my opinion. We all care so much about it that we, we meet separately, all these organizations, to deal with basically the same issue. And I'm just letting you know, you have a, a lot of people out there in the community who I would like to see more engaged. I don't know if you'd consider a advisory committee, something like that? I understand Vista is going to do that or is doing that?
So now you're on topic, you're not off-topic.
I'm off-topic, okay.
No, in other words, this is supposed to be an, it was not on the agenda. We already heard.
Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Hines actually looked into the matter about concerns raised in terms of mobile homes in parks that are owned by the parks. And there are some protections from the state. And also, there is access to services, legal aid, and another contracted out organization. What is that, Ms. Hines? And this is, this is on items not on the agenda, mobile home parks.
Yes, the city contracts with CSA San Diego County to provide fair housing services and landlord tenant issues. They do have office hours at the Chavez Resource Center as well as Libby Lake Resource Center, Monday through Thursday, Monday through Wednesday at Chavez from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30, and then at Libby Lake on Thursdays. They are also available via email. So I would encourage anyone who has issues that they're facing with landlord tenant issues to contact them directly. Legal Aid also is doing a lot of work in the eviction protection area space as well.
All right, thank you. And, and you did find information that state laws do cover those, those homes that are actually rented from park-owned.
Yes, that is correct. In conjunction with the city attorney's office, we did look into that issue. And there is, there are some limitations, but there is coverage there within the tenant protection act.
Right, and I, I haven't yet received direct information from individuals that, that they are looking for information. Have you?
No, ma'am, I have not.
Okay, so I just encourage people to, if they're having housing issues with respect to, especially the latest information that we got was very general, did not say which parks or, you know, really, we need to refer those folks to these services. And you can get those referrals from the Housing Department. So please contact the Housing Department. All right, we're at the end of the, of the meeting, of this workshop. The next regularly scheduled meeting for the city council is at 3:30 on Wednesday, February 19th, 2025. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you so much for all of your support. Thank you.